So what I did was on mine, I highlighted anything that we said we would discuss. So if we start with Town Board, the first thing I highlighted was office and miscellaneous.
I'm trying to find the right spreadsheet in a second. It's saved in there.
Page two.
Chairpoint supervisor.
I'm not doing chairpoint.
I had saved one of my desktop.
Oh, I see.
Highlighted in my notes, but it got saved in my, I think, in a drive. I gotta find the right drive.
I feel your pain.
Yeah, we were talking there, Jerry, about going from 15 down to between 10 and 12.
And I've got 12 in there. This is just office and miscellaneous, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Town Board, eight, ten, ten.
First eight months, we were at 6,200, so that projects out to 9,300 for the year. I'm saying 10,000.
So my understanding is we might have one more desk, but that would be in Joe's line? I think he was talking about a new desk, Joe?
That would be in his line.
His line, right, on his. But in terms of what you guys know in...
I think, sure, I didn't get all... Everybody has new equipment or we bought whatever.
Yeah, we're okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think we're comfortable.
10,000?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I am. Let's pick up on... By the way, the model today is a cut. Cut, yeah.
Then I have to add... Okay, so the next one I have is printing and advertising. We budgeted 9,000 or projected...
We projected in the first eight months, 3,400, our cost of 5,200.
Okay.
Our cost of 52.
So 6,000? 9?
How much?
Yeah, I mean, I wrote 7.
Yeah, I know because I had something, but...
I go 7, Jerry. Keep it minus 2,000. 7K. That picks up plus 2,000.
What'd you do for office and miscellaneous, 10?
10.
Yes. And Association of Towns, I think...
Association of Towns.
Plus it, didn't you?
Yeah, that went to 6,760, something like that.
So you wanted to add 2,000 onto that line, I believe it was.
Well, yeah, I mean, let's go back to... I think we... I don't think we had the numbers the day we were talking about it. So it would be all five Town Board members?
Yes.
Okay. And then Shelby?
And Christina? Go with new HR responsibilities or no?
Yeah.
All right. I'm gonna put 7. I don't think everybody's gonna go.
Yeah, put 7, yeah.
Yeah, I'm also thinking that people might have specialized classes elsewhere. I'm trying to think of how many HR classes I've seen of these Association of Towns.
So what does 7 produce?
It's 1,100 per person.
Seventy, $700. So that's plus 3, not plus 2.
The line above was 6,000 is what we settled on, right? Print and advertising, 7.
7, yeah.
Okay.
We settled on 7 for that.
Now we're negative.
So what are we saying? It's the bottom line for that one?
We're saying the bottom line for that one is 7 times 11 is $7,700.
I had written down 3,000 for drug testing, not 3, 3,300.
Testing, I didn't highlight that one.
3, you said?
Yeah.
Is that on projection or...?
I think so.
I just kept it what it was.
But if we're at 16,44...
Do they do another round at the end of the year or do we kind of do it for...
No, it's just... Yeah, I think it is like, it is on one. So we're on track to spend 2,500.
So we're gonna bring it down to 3?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Plus $300?
Minus.
Minus 300.
Well, I'm... I'm pushing any luck.
Just side tally.
Oh, I see, you're doing, yeah.
So basically, what we have so far on page 2 is plus 8,000, plus 7,300, minus 3,000, correct?
7,300, yes.
Yes. So you have a net gain there of plus $4,300. You've cut from page 2. That's your net gain.
I'm sorry, I'm getting us that we're saving $3,800.
No, more.
Okay.
1,300.
You went from 15,000 to 10,000.
Yeah.
And then you went from 9,000 to 7,000.
9,000 to 7,000, right.
And then you went up from 4,760 to 7,700.
Saved 300 on the top line.
You saved 300 on the top line.
Yeah, I got all that.
I also had from before our discussion, school travel mileage, that we thought 1,100 would be more appropriate.
Okay, let's take up school.
I didn't even highlight that one, so I don't know.
From our earlier discussion, that's what I put.
Oh, right.
Oh, I see, it went up.
Yeah, so when I do that, I get...
Okay, so you're putting at 1500, are you putting that to?
1,100.
11, 1100, okay.
I'm taking out the 3810.
3810, right, okay.
So what does that go into, 1,100?
Yeah. Saving of 3810.
Because those are... Yeah, I had highlighted that one too.
So that's another 6,500. No, 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 $650. Right? Plus?
550.
550, excuse me, I'm sorry, yes.
So what's the net?
3810.
3,250.
I get 3810.
Oh, 3810, I'm sorry, yeah, that's correct, that's 3810, I'm sorry.
Okay. Next is Justice Court. I have highlighted the overtime. The judges put in for 4,000. I put in the 80, that was the...
I'm sorry, where are we?
Right below, next line, Justice Court.
And you put in 20...
I put in what was already there. The justices made a case for 4,000.
I think they should keep that.
Which line are you on, Jerry?
It's Clerk overtime. Justice Court, 8, 10, 10.
104.
7, 10, 104.
Yes, because we've only expended 320 this year. And they were putting in for 4,000, I don't know why with...
I think it had to do with Stan saying, you know, when they have, you know, whatever they call them. Saturdays.
Arrangements.
Arrangements, thank you. Saturdays, they have to come in, but...
Most of that would have happened in the summer, so it should be accounted for.
Which line are we on?
You're on the fourth line down, Clerk overtime. So, I mean, we've only expended $320, but maybe some of that they did on their own. Maybe they wanted to be reversed to that, so, I mean, however...
I mean, it hasn't been spent. I mean, so it's not like they're running out of money.
Yeah, we just, we needed to double check because we need to analyze.
Well, it's still quite a significant amount.
The other thing is, this was her first year. And I would think even that, just there would be a little bit more out, a few more hours, just learning it, getting it together. You know, I'm on this project, I might be a little less next year anyway, I mean, another reason, so...
My recommendation is we keep it where it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And then travel, they wanted to increase from 1,500 to 2,500. That was because of drug court and...
Classes, CLA. CLA classes. Oh, so could we compromise at 2,000?
That's where I was going, so you read my mind.
I mean, they've spent 974.
Right.
I mean...
Another 526.
They spent 526.
Oh, right. Yeah, so 1,500, I'm fine with. I mean, I would even drop it down to 1,000. Oh, no, that's the balance, never mind this.
Yeah, how frequently do you want to go? What's the mileage, mileage rate? I mean, it should be a countable figure for the most...
I'd keep it at 1,500.
Yeah, leave it at 1,500, yeah.
Okay, then the next one I have is office and miscellaneous, just $500 difference from what they asked for and what I proposed.
Again, it looks like our number from last year would have been good.
Yeah, the number, in other words, the number that has projected through the first eight months...
Yes.
Is at almost 3,600, take 1,800, add it to 3,600, and you're right about where they're looking at. You're looking at... So I wrote down, rather than 5,000, I said, we split the difference at 5250.
A 110, about 440 from last year.
I mean, you can also say tighten your belt and eat to 500.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. I'm asking Shelby to look up 44, 440 contracts. I just want to see if there is some potential savings there or if that's something that got paid at the end.
That might get paid at the end, yeah.
Might, yeah.
No, that's monthly. 440?
Yeah, 440.
Last year, 6,739.
In office and miscellaneous?
No, contract. Contract, so we'll leave the 5, that's what they're asking.
And we, but last year we rolled that budget.
Yeah, we had to move some money in there.
Yeah, but we modified it to 5,000, or no, we kept it, we adopted it 5,000.
You adopted 5.
What was it?
Last year you started at 3, and then we added in 5, so it went up to 7,700 last year.
And you spent almost all of that. 67, I was spent.
On office and miscellaneous, you are actually projecting a right around 50, 5250. Which is $250. It's a compromise in between what they're asking for with the supervisor has done. But you could put, you could keep it at 5,000 and just tighten the belt, so...
So I'm just gonna put 6,750 in here.
Your contracts?
Yeah, just to see what it all looks like. And I'm gonna take that out.
What does that entail, you know?
It's the fundamental business service law books copier.
Yeah.
Right? It gets a monthly subscription on that.
It's that service that they give. Contract out to, like, if they don't collect parking ticket. That company, like, goes after people to collect the money, but then they get to keep a portion of it.
Right.
Question, let's go back to 10, 10, 493, which is Law Library under Town Board. Do we spend that?
Should I say it again?
Law Library under Town Board.
We do, I always thought we didn't, it seems, it comes out somewhere.
Because I mean, because you've got, Justice Court has, you know, his services. Your attorney should have his services, you know, his contract.
Are we duplicating here?
No, I wanted to take that out, but actually, we spent it, I think.
No.
No?
I just looked.
I thought we did.
Maybe we spent it the year before? Could it be like a buy-in? Or is it just for, like, updating?
I don't know why we need a...
Yeah.
That was a Dottie thing. Let's find out exactly what that...
She does...
It might be updating.
Our town codebooks.
Codebooks, yeah.
If we didn't spend it, though.
Yeah. The year before, you just used it somewhere else.
So I'm saying, let's get rid of the, you know, 1030 in that line. And then take the contracts in Justice Court to where it should be.
So you're saying, take it at 10, 10, 193 out? Move it to a...
Move it to Justice Court.
So we're saving 5,000.
So Jim from Town Boards.
Yep.
Okay.
And so it's going into contracts?
Yeah.
And we're bringing contracts up to what amount?
Little bit more than. Up to 6,750? Good number.
So on page 2, that puts us at a cut now of $5,110, not 3810, but... You add the 1,300 with the 3810, we're at $5,110 savings on page 2 alone.
Yeah, so then back to Justice Court, office and miscellaneous, so we settled on 5,000 then?
Yes, then a...
So...
Well, if you're gonna do it that way, Jim, then you gotta add the 1,300 to this page.
We're adding 1750. Because that's what the fundamentals contract is.
Right, so it's gonna be 6,750 for the contracts.
But we transfer 1,300, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we're taking, we're popping up 1750, 1,300 we found elsewhere.
Okay. Well, and then these...
Under which line, Amber?
Contracts.
Contracts.
Under contracts, okay. So that 5,000 is becoming how much?
6,750. And then Association of Towns needs to be 2,200.
I thought we brought it down to 1,100 because they said only one...
Only one's gonna go, okay. That was what Stan said. Well, he said he wouldn't go if he was on.
Right.
But we don't know if Mary Faith, she always goes.
Right. So either way, I mean, one of them would have to cover.
Right.
Right? So...
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. So essentially, one person would go?
Yes.
So we're adding 1750 and deducting 900?
Yes.
Yes, we're adding 1750 under contracts.
Yep.
And what did we finally decide on office and miscellaneous, 5?
Leaving it, yeah.
We're leaving it at 5, so there's no touch there.
In Association of Towns, we're reducing.
By $900. That's a net loss.
850.
Of 850, correct.
So...
So basically, we're about $3,000 up here, folks, for the day so far.
Stenographer, Shelby, over the past few years, have we ever hit the 11,000? There's only tracking to get like 9,500.
You're asking for more, actually.
Oh, they're asking for 12.
In 2021, we were at 12,200.
I don't think, I think with that in mind, I think you gotta keep it.
12,200 in 2021, you said.
Last year, well, last year was only 8,500.
So we're tagging to 9,500 basically this year.
Yes, yeah, and I think...
And 2021 was at the lip. The 2021 was still...
Pandemic.
I was gonna say, were they, I think, when the courts reopened?
I feel safe with 10.
Was there a case that year?
Dog.
Oh. Was she a what?
The dog case might have been.
Yeah, the dog case, so we had court time, that might have been.
That was in 2021, yeah.
Good pickup.
Yeah.
She's under 50.
That's why.
Under 40.
So they asked for 12, we put in 11.
I'm comfortable with 10.
So stenographer, what are we taking that to?
10. Are you done?
Yeah, I'm comfortable there.
All right, so now we're just at negative...
So, are we minus 5,260?
Hang on, I have my tools on the spreadsheet that I work with.
I have her minus 150.
Just for that department.
Wait, on this page?
Just for that department.
Yeah, so when I add it with us up above, I 1,100.
So you picked up $1,000 there, right?
No, 1,800, 1,850. We...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we added 1750.
Yeah.
And then we deducted 900.
Right. And then we deducted another 1,000.
So it's 1,850. Yes.
6,000 to 700.
Correct. See, every page, that should be our goal, pick something up there, lessen...
You with this, DJ?
Only 150.
I'm not, I've got, I must have done my formula wrong. I'm getting, we're picking up 150.
I got 150 also.
I also have.
No, 18... Contracts, we added 1750.
Right.
But of that, we had 1,300 of it.
Can't double count it, I'm doing it by department, yep.
So, all right, but I didn't, I said 1750.
All right.
Then we're taking 900 away from Association of Towns, then we're adding...
We're taking 1,000 from the stenographer.
Yeah, I'm doing it backwards, I'm adding against this, yeah, yeah.
150.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm getting a total right now, sub total, two departments, 5,260.
So this one, this page is 150?
Yeah, this page is 150.
Okay.
Yeah. Supervisor. Now what are we gonna do? Are we gonna holistically address the clerks and the insurance, or are we gonna do this by department?
I think we should do it holistically.
True.
And then still have an analysis to work on with.
Yeah.
It's just, there's just been...
Not enough time, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like we're all week. Something over there for office.
Yes, so...
Not working on budget the whole time.
Well, we have Tuesday, don't we? I mean, so this is not the end of...
I don't actually know that we had that one.
I think we have more than Tuesday.
No, I mean, in terms of a empty day.
Right, but I mean, as far as, like...
Well, Tuesday, we have work session and...
No, Wednesday.
No, we don't, that's Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, oh, yeah, Tuesday we have, yeah, right.
But Tuesday's not a bad day if you have time.
Today's a mental health day.
That's Monday.
Our public hearing on the budget is November 8.
Yeah.
So we, like, when do we have to have it set to post? Like, when?
Amber.
When do we need to...
I have that somewhere outside here.
I think five days, well, it has to be in the paper, five days before the public hearing.
Because I just, I feel like, like, we keep rushing and it's like, never get a chance to catch a breath and just sit back and like...
Public hearing is Wednesday, the 8th, okay.
My capitation show, but it needs to be posted by the plane.
20th?
I...
So that would be the 19th issue, so post it on...
Posted where?
In a reporter, in their report, so it's in a paper by, I think, on 26.
So it's a paper by the 26?
Issue, yeah.
So I need to have it done by the...
Yeah, on 26.
It's our drop dead day, not that much time. If there's time.
I'm checking.
If that's the case, we can, we have a...
Well, but Jim's gone next week.
Oh, Jim, when do you leave?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and the following Monday, I think.
Correct.
Yeah, write that down just so we'd be able to track things, so...
I'll be back on Sunday.
He's caretaking. To Zoom.
Ooh.
Yes, if you can.
Yes, allowed to Zoom, but...
But if it's feasible.
Taking sometimes doesn't allow.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try that, but getting them to school and all these activities is gonna be difficult.
Okay, maybe we can nail you midday.
No, maybe we could do Tuesday. While they're at school.
Between pickup and drop off.
Tuesday, I'm timing.
I don't wanna do Tuesday.
Okay.
I mean, the next Tuesday, because we, we have PBA and HBA, and we need to do...
HCA is on Thursday.
Right, but we need to do some prep for that.
So the notice of the public hearing has to be at least five days between the date of the first publication and then the date specified for the public hearing. So the date that it's in the paper and then five days until the public hearing.
When does the public hearing have to be?
Yeah.
It's a honor before, Thursday following the election.
It has to be in the reporter by the 26th of this month.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
To the reporter?
Yes, so we have to be done by the 20th so that it can get submitted to the paper for printing on Thursday, the 26th.
With the public hearing stated for November 8th as well?
Right.
All right.
And that's, when are we doing PBA?
I mean, we were gonna do it on Tuesday, but we could move that if we needed to, maybe we can move it to...
There it is, I just can't read my handwriting.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine. I just, just need to know, like, about time for that analysis, carve out time for that analysis before we...
Okay.
Okay, so we didn't pick, anyways, we can figure that out at the end, or now.
All right, back to the budget again?
But we'll do that at the end, we'll see, soon. Figuring out a date.
When we can do that at the end, yeah. I mean, yeah.
All right, Shelby and supervisor.
This is here, so rather than...
Oh.
Yeah. Put it at that budget.
Chewing up her time. No, no, we have hundreds of changes to...
Yeah, we have lots of...
It feels like we could pay hundreds of hours.
Do you want me to do that?
You can just...
Are you gonna just sit here?
Yeah. Let us into your page, to your 1000 page.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Hold on just a second.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
The right page.
8140, 8140.
Page 21.
So much excitement.
That was satisfying.
Love a workbook, I love a workbook.
And they're all image related. They talk to each other, they're crazy. My friend housing board.
About 8140, got you.
That part frightens me.
All right, this should be, this should, I mean, it's only five items, folks, let's start. Clerk is adopted, we adopted 8,000 so far, and we haven't spent anything.
Do I know this?
No, no, that is, gets moved.
Okay, it gets moved, okay.
Consolidated. Yes, so we set them for the departments, Jim, you know, the different committees.
All right.
And then we do a budget transfer to move them all to one area so that for accounting purposes during the year... And then we do a budget transfer to move them all to one area so that for accounting purposes during the year.
Okay.
We know what clerk's paycheck is getting posted to ten different lines.
So what I'm saying is we're not touching that.
Right.
Eight thousand whatsoever. Office and miscellaneous, um.
They spend most of it.
Yeah, they, they, they have. They've gone through ninety percent of it plus.
Right.
Um.
I would keep that.
Yeah, and I guess for the office miscellaneous, we've got like.
It's, you know, it's, what it is, is it's a lot of like, um, uh, me doing posters and I'm trying to post ad, you know, we're just, we're just really trying to be out in the public and, and so I'm sure I'll need.
If the clerks make like photocopies to handout.
Yeah, I mean, I think we had to do reporter ads and stuff like that, because.
But how you gonna do that, how you gonna do that on five hundred dollars?
That's it?
That's what they have. Advertising and communications have reported that.
Yes.
And that was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I got a little bit more down there.
And that's been up to two thousand four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next year.
And legal services and.
And the, yeah, so.
Consulting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the legal services and the consulting are what I really wanted to come to you guys to talk about.
Yes.
Um, it, I foresee, and I'm gonna bring it up at the community housing board meeting on Thursday, but just even right now, like, looking forward into the next year, I anticipate needing more legal services and potentially even some outside counsel to evaluate some of the stuff that we're looking at. Um, I don't anticipate we need anything around the ADU stuff that we're doing because that's all covered, thank God, from CDC LI and their council. Thank you so much, Gwen. Um, but in, even just in this process of considering the RFP and trying to develop it, um, you know, we're just kind of, there's just a bunch of thorny questions of just like, how do you write in an RFP for rental management? You know what I mean? Like, there's just not a lot of people that have done that. It's my, it's my expectation that we're gonna need somebody else to look at that. You know, there's other thorny issues that the community has raised as to like eligibility and stuff like that. And I wanna make sure that we have really sound legal guidance as we consider those things. Um, and it is, I imagine that it will cost money. The other thing that I wanted to say is I do know that the budget is really tight and I wanted to bring as an idea to you and I'm also gonna, again, I'm just kind of putting this forth as an idea, um, and I'm gonna bring it to the community housing board that if it was, would it be, it is my understanding, and not a lawyer, um, that it might be appropriate to use part of our community housing fund to make sure, uh, if there was additional funds needed, it feels to me, and like I said, I wanted to bring it to this board and I am gonna bring it to the community housing board for public discussions, um, that if additional legal services were needed, that that might be where their source was if it was not workable within the town budget. Um, I just think it's really important to have a solid foundation for any work that we're doing. So that's.
With that, with that in mind, yeah.
Uh-huh.
And I'm just throwing this out here.
Yeah.
Stephen's role here, there's, there's, there's no services that our town attorney can't provide in, in this area, or no?
Um, I mean, I think that that for me is the question mark. I think that there are obviously a lot of services that our town council can provide. Um, but again, I know that just some of the stuff that we're already starting to deal with and the RFP are some, just to be straightforward, some very thorny issues. And it, I can see that there, I would, I would love to have the option, even if I didn't need it, to be able to retain outside counsel to weigh in, um, on some, some of these issues. You know, like, there's the eligibility thing, um, which I know it's, it.
So, so.
What I hear is that you're looking for someone with more of a specialty in this specific area.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
So for twenty twenty-three, we adopted two thousand, we modified the budget to two thousand, we've spent the first eight months zero. Do you anticipate in the next four months that you're gonna spend anything based on twenty twenty-three money? In the next four, in the next three months, actually.
I would, well, here's the thing, I would very much like to. I would like to have it, um, I, you know, I, we are, as you guys know, we are working on developing an RFP, we're not even putting it out there yet, but I already know that we have big legal questions that need to be answered. Um, and it is, you know, the, the community housing board would like to make sure that we feel really solid um, in that advice and, and, and perhaps we're able to, to work with our town council, that'd be great. But I wanna be able to reserve the right if we need to go outside to get advice. I would like to be able to do that.
We don't know what the stream is on the transfer tax, that's, you know, just a fact.
Yeah.
That being said, this is not gonna be a big chunk, I don't think.
Right.
This is, you know, gonna be hidden, hidden, hidden run consulting. This is not going to court. So, you know, so I, I would be for leaving this in the way the supervisor has it and when you need more money, it comes from.
As we.
Transfer tax, because I think that's what it's for, to help us set this up and keep it on track.
Liz, the sixteen thousand and change that we originally adopted for consulting. What would we, what did we plan on using that for? Because we haven't really spent it.
Um, I believe, I'm wondering if it was a leftover, I actually am not totally sure. As you remember, I was not the chair.
Right.
Previously, so here I am. Um, I'm guessing that it had something to do with the housing plan.
So what I'm saying is, to BJ's point, I mean, if we left the total number that's here, you know, we have the five thousand in consulting that really, you know, we're not sure how we're gonna use it. We have two thousand in legal, a, a, and very honestly, uh, we should handle this the same way we handle CPF and WQI. And any, any of these costs shouldn't be coming from that fund.
The contract costs. Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, and I, I think I'm reading you right, Liz, you know, it's a shame because you want every dime to go to the actual house.
Yes. Yes.
But that being said, to get to the house, we need to spend these monies.
Yeah, and I, and I guess what I would say is, is it's not, I don't anticipate that we're gonna be like running up a thirty thousand dollar bill, but it would be nice to be able to have a specialized lawyer or retainer to be able to ask, like, did I get this eligibility right?
Yeah.
Can I write this in?
Yeah.
Is this, is this right? Um, I think that it could be, again, I, I don't, I don't anticipating it be, being a large expense, but it would be great to be able to, and again, I'm just kind of, I think in my mind, I have like a five thousand dollar retainer or something in mind, is, I feel like usually how.
Well, legally, we can use CPF.
Yeah.
Most of the time, yes.
Yeah, but I just, I wanna be transparent about like how much I'm talking about, you know, like, uh, I just think that it's, it's just so important and I know the community has so many concerns.
Yeah.
I just wanna, you just, I, I just, yeah, I just wanna get it right. It's so important.
Um, what is the rationale here, do you know, Amber, like, um, do we have to vote on every expenditure they make?
No.
No, they have the right to, they, community housing board, I'm sorry, has the ability to go and hire an attorney or to.
I think it outlines the, the applicable expenses in the vote.
Yeah, but, but is there a process?
Yeah, that's actually great, because that was one of the things that I've been thinking about too, is just like, you know, as we're talking to these other communities and stuff like that, um, just getting like referrals and just like, hey, this person might be helpful. Is that, if were we to find an outside counsel to run some of these thorny or questions by, um, is that a, do, do we as a, as a committee engage with them? Is it something that I refer up to you, you know, like, how does it, do I have to issue a proposal? Um, or I, I just, I just, I wasn't clear, I, I didn't fully understand the process with that too, which I know is outside of this budget discussion, but.
I think, yeah. We definitely have to look into it. Off the top of my head, I would say that similar to CPF and WQI, ten percent of the monies coming in each year could be spent on administrative costs. And so we don't have to go through like the public hearing portion of spending it.
I, I wouldn't want to even get close to that, but yes, yeah.
Right, right, right. And so, I mean, that's just one thing to keep in mind, so how much we tap in for kind of administrative stuff. Would legal services related to a specific project be part of the project? And so then, that's, I'm not clear, because I just have a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it would, I think it would, I mean, I think it could either fall within project fees, obviously, as if like, hopefully I get this RFP all the way to the gate, you know? Um, but even, even if we're just kind of like working on and getting legal advice, it feels like that would solidly be under administrative. Like, and I wouldn't even get close to ten, like, a couple grand was like my craziest day of like.
It should be a mix, so we'll have to do a little bit more research on that. With respect to the legal, certain of the consulting fees in here. They were put in because we thought that there would be engineering fees associated with getting more, you know, the highway property, you know.
Water testing, water testing.
The water wells, the test wells, that would lead to.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and that is, actually, I, I need to double, actually, I had an email in my inbox from Joe Fenora right now
Yeah.
um, about that, so that, maybe that's exactly what it was, because I do, I think that there's like a well happening.
So should we?
Are, are we at a place with some of that to encumber some of this, you know?
Well, if we end up retaining, like, we'd have to transfer from consulting down to legal fees, which was definitely within our purview, but if we have some, you know, a.
A test well ready to come?
We, oh, oh, I was, you know, returning to, um, retainer to help us with, you know, getting the, the contracts set up for something. I don't know if we can issue that, but if we.
Yeah.
So we can look at it.
Could look at it.
Okay.
But eventually this'll zero out, is really what we're kind of saying here. Because it's gonna be covered by.
Right.
A non-taxpayer. Yeah, I mean.
Yes, we have to.
By transfer.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can put in anything.
That will show we buy by whatever.
Just, yeah, just.
It's similar to like CPF, you know, we're gonna estimate, we're gonna purchase, you know, five million dollars worth of properties this year, you know?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
We put something into the budget, but then we don't.
Gonna cover it on the revenue side, okay.
Exactly, yeah.
Taxpayer appropriations, whatever it comes from.
This sounds good.
Okay.
Cool, okay, awesome. I just wanted to like, cause I, like I said, we've just been working on that in the last couple weeks and I was just like, I can already see I'm going to need this, but then I see, and I was like, I should come and talk to you guys about it.
Yes, it's perfect.
Okay, cool.
Um, do you guys have any other questions, Ray?
I don't think so.
And I'll try to circle back to you, I just, I said goodbye to my daughter, so.
Yeah, 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 no worries. I have a couple of, um, really solid recommendations coming from East Hampton's, uh, CDC LI and, um, potentially some council that we can talk to.
Excellent.
So.
Good.
Exactly. Hopefully one of those, a person. Alright, alright, thanks.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Have a great, also, the, uh, the posters look good, really beautiful up here.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, they've actually ramped up the room.
It's, it's brighter.
It changes space.
Slightly chaotic, but it's nice. I like it, I like it.
That was like inside of my head.
Hey, Sheldon, back to Supervisor.
No, before we go back here, I just wanna make a, a statement too on, um, both, uh, Joe and Stephen's salary. You know, the fact that we're continuing to up those salaries to a fairly healthy amount. Uh, people start to ask you, what's the need for outside engineering, what's the need for outside counsel, you know, based on the salaries and these services being provided. So a lot of this stuff, I would like to make sure that we exhaust of both the town engineer and the town attorney to do whatever they can in order to do these, provide these kinds of services where needed. And then as a last resort, look at the outside counsel.
I, I would agree with that, but then also, the other side of that is to say, they're both one-man offices and rather than have them do something they're not capable of, I think it's a responsibility to make sure.
If there's a specialty.
Yes, yes.
I think there's a B U E in there.
No, I'm just, I'm, I don't, I'm just making, I'm just making that statement that.
Yeah, definitely.
Now, I'm, I'm hearing from people saying, wow, you got these two salaries and have substantially and.
Yeah, but.
Yeah. Sheldon Supervisor, uh, twelve, twelve point one oh five, longevity. What, what do you, what's the actual, I have ninety-six, ninety-five, forty-three?
Yep.
Okay, and then for the second longevity, uh, one-ten.
Wait, what was it, ninety-six?
Ninety-six, ninety-five, forty-three. And then for the second one, seven thousand four hundred ninety-eighty-four, okay.
Seven four ninety-eighty-four.
Right. So there's a little bit of a change there.
Yeah.
That's the only change I have on Supervisor. I didn't have any questions. And then the next one is independent audit. I have, uh, I had seventy-three, one hundred, but it's seventy-two, seven hundred?
Seventy-two, seven hundred, yep.
Okay. That's a bit four hundred dollars saved.
Uh, sorry, what was that one?
Seven, um, the next independent audit, seventy-two thousand, seven hundred.
Yeah, oh, it's all the way down there, okay, seventy-two.
I was doing the same thing.
Seventy-two, seven?
Seventy-two thousand, seven hundred, yeah. What was the difference on the top one, Sheldon?
Sixteen eighty-six. Wait, no, one, one hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. That's what I had.
One sixty-six, eighty-six. Okay.
Too many numbers in my brain all of a sudden.
I'm still trying to copy my spreadsheets over there. Lock in.
You good? What do you have in still there, Joe? Which one?
And the audit changed, is what you're saying?
Uh, okay.
But I think Jim's been trying to do his.
Ninety-six, ninety-six, ninety-five.
His tracking number changes.
Yeah.
Next longevity.
Yeah.
Seven thousand four ninety-eighty-six. And down here.
Seven, seven.
Seventy-two thousand, seven hundred. Yeah, I got that, okay. Okay, tax receiver, I have no notes. Anybody have anything on tax receivers?
Oh, look, and, and give me a sec.
Yeah, I'm like.
No, I have no notes, I'm just, uh, three percent raise is what we saw there. On salaries.
Yeah, no, actually, I didn't have any.
There was, there was nothing, uh.
Okay, now the next, there's assessors, there's some issues we have to discuss. Part-time hire, I did, I took it out, we do really haven't discussed whether we need the part-time hire or not. I'll just give you the issues that, uh, summer intern, do we wanna summer intern? And, uh, uh, support contracts is two hundred dollar difference. So those are, first of all, do we want the part-time hire?
Okay, this is what I would propose for the part-time.
Yeah.
I would propose that we think about the part-time hire being hired on July one. Because they're absorbing a new person, we're hoping in the next month, they're pushing out a role, a complicated role with additional office hours that are gonna be off the charts. I just don't think there's gonna be any time to pay attention to anybody new. But that being said, I do think this is ongoing. They're gonna get this role done this year, there's still a huge amount of data collection and data correction to go on and we have to acknowledge that this building department has been expanded. You need to expand that department, they go hand in hand. But in the interest of saving some money, let's think about the part-time hire for July first.
So, so by doing it July first, is it really gonna become a full-time hire?
I think you're gonna have to evaluate that. I mean, the future board is going to have to evaluate that, but, 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 um, I, I'm just saying.
In other words, BJ.
Helps us with the budget next year and it helps Judith look forward.
And in other words, when I say, when I say that part-time hire, are we paying them the, the full salary for half the year?
No.
Okay, okay.
No, um, but I mean, you know, whatever the number is, you're gonna, you, I need help on that, you know, on what that would be. Um, I, I think Judith's saying fifteen hours a week, I do, why is that stick in my head, it does? Um, and, and I think it's a way to sort of, um, you know, solemn, be solemn and split the baby. Um, and, and get there, but in a little bit shorter steps than Judith would probably like, but we get her there.
But do you think that you need time to, to train the new full-time hire and get them up to speed before you take on two? It's hard to train two people at once.
And the other thing is Judith was concerned, she wanted the part-time to be there, to be exposed to Pat, because that is, um, you know, she's, she has earned her right to retirement. Um, but that being said, um, hopefully this new hire can then be brought up to speed by Pat and then turn around and bring up the part-timer.
Yeah, makes, makes perfectly good sense, and then if you hire that person on July first, you have July.
Right.
Okay, September, you have three months working part-time to evaluate the worth
Right.
and whether you'd want to continue to make that full year or continue with the July one.
No, I wouldn't ever, I mean, I would think, my imagination is in twenty twenty-five, Jim, is the part-time is year-round in twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
But it's only this year in terms of logistically absorbing them into the department that I would delay it.
Well, if you're making a judgment, do you have the right person for the.
Yeah, and that too, that, yeah.
Time need, you know?
So would we, would we add the twenty-two, that's what I'm asking you.
What would be the hourly?
Eleven thousand two fifty.
Eleven, okay.
It's like half.
Well, I, I'm all, I'd also propose we take out the summer intern.
Me too.
So do you wanna put some of that into the.
Well, that's why I said eleven two fifty, because if we're taking out fifty-two fifty, then we're only a net increase of six.
Okay.
Also, I have an updated number for Pat. Remember, remember when Judith came in and.
Yes.
Yes.
So hers is forty-three, nine, four, seven.
So forty-three, nine, three, seven.
Nine, four, seven. That's with the three percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so that just wiped out our game.
Summer intern softens the blow a little bit, but.
Yeah.
Still down.
We're at two fifty-six.
Uh, you got two fifty-six?
If that's what's left, two hundred and fifty-six dollars after the, it's a negative five grand.
I got two fifty-two. You took out the summer intern?
I did.
I know, but BJ had a different number than us.
Yeah, I have a, we're gonna increase this five thousand five hundred and seventy over the supervisor.
Which one?
The whole department.
The whole department.
Did I do that wrong? You got the.
Me.
Which?
Yeah, fifty-five, seventy. Yeah, that's my change too.
Me too. Well, I was thinking overall so far.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not tracking overall, I'm just. Fifty-five, seventy, yeah, my department's department, yeah.
That's an increase, so, increase of the.
An increase of fifty-five, seventy.
Oh.
We're putting the part-time person back.
Wow.
Yeah.
But you know, I just. As a net of.
Two hundred.
Two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
But, oh, it's today's.
I'm tracking all our, an hour later. It's our little ups and downsies, so we just went.
Right.
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, next, assessment board review, no changes there. Town clerk. We're going to have to make some changes here.
So this is the same. All right, so she, you want to start with the salary there?
Well, yeah. Originally, I had proposed we take the WMAC and give it completely to the town clerk's office. Amber feels with all the changes going on, and especially if we decrease one clerk, that is just going to be too much for her to take on.
Yes.
Additional responsibility. So I had decreased the clerk's salary and compensated it from WMAC money. So what I'm proposing now is we make Amber whole again with the clerk's money and the 3%.
Right.
So that is going to increase the budget. Then we're going to take, we'll keep Linda the same as we had previously. She'll have the salary with the WMAC money to make her complete. And we're going to take WMAC money and add it to Catherine's salary to make her the clerk. But that's a different line.
Yeah.
So in this one, we're changing Amber to $96,413.14.
13.
Okay.
Amber had asked for the summer intern. I had taken that out. I think.
Yeah.
And overtime, we kept the 10,000.
What are we doing with Linda?
We're keeping that salary. What I proposed. Get the WMAC.
Okay, because she's still continuing to do.
Okay.
Yes, yes, and she'll get the WMAC money for that.
Okay, so what are we doing with summer intern?
I propose we don't do it this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll keep the discretionary overtime.
We kept that at 10.
Yeah, because given that we're going down.
Right.
On a semi-permanent basis.
Association of towns. We decided.
Shelby on the WMAC right now. Could you just look that up and tell me what the account registers right now?
For salaries?
No, no, but just the account.
It goes into the general fund now because we, all the fees go into the.
Yeah, I know.
The revenue?
Not just where the account stands. It used to be a number that vacillated between, you know, 150 and 300,000.
Oh, I would have to get that from the.
We can anticipate the revenues, or you can go to the revenue page and see what projecting for next year.
Yeah, I don't have the September number yet, so whatever number you have in here.
Whatever we have in here through August.
I know it's layers on. Somebody picked that up and asked for the question.
We'll get that.
Ask the contract accountant to keep track of all that.
Yeah, that's something like, more like I asked earlier when it started, is time to spend with the fund balance, like see where all of this falls. And then Shelby and I need to sit down. I have some conflicting information. It's starting to come back to me once I get my head in the game. That I didn't agree, I didn't know where the contract accountant had their fund balance number. I agreed with 2021, but then 2022, I don't think that they accounted for something. So I just wanted to cross-reference. So I think WMAC balance or various fund balances.
Oh, wait a minute, I have a little note. I think we're here. Office and miscellaneous, I have add 2,500 for new software content. Okay. So.
Because we're going to be taking.
Yeah, well, I didn't get up to that yet. Wait.
All right, oh, well, sorry.
We have association of towns. We're going from 2,500 to 3,300.
And?
And then we have office and miscellaneous go from 6,000 to 8,500.
So I have a question about this records repair. So we haven't spent any of that. Is that something that comes out at the end of the year? Or is that just like archiving? What is?
Have we ever spent it?
I'm not sure what Dottie had that for. I believe.
File folders.
I don't even, I have no explanation for that. I've never spent anything out of there. I'm not sure what, why she requested for that.
Yeah, we've lost. Two, three years we haven't, or they move it somewhere else.
Okay.
I think maybe it was a backup in case, but there was no explanation.
Okay.
Zero?
Zero.
Yeah, I would say so. That's been used in several years.
Well, because if we're upgrading the software, that will take care of kind of digitizing all of that. So then I have a net increase for this category of 12,464.
I have 18,763.
64. Okay. For total on the salaries, we've got 22372?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
22372.
220, how much?
2237286.
What's the total you have?
22370.
No, for the whole.
Changes, an increase of 12,464.
Okay.
We're doing versus.
I had 12.
Did you take the 300 out?
No.
I took the 300 out, and then there's, it was. So associations of town goes to 3,300. And then the records and repairs goes to zero. And then office and miscellaneous goes to 8,500.
Right.
Let's see what I did.
Going in the wrong direction here, folks.
Yep.
Town board, 2,500.
Now, I believe I have the 2,500 for this year. Because the total to implement that software was 10,500, which I have in my budget. So I don't think necessarily we need to add the 2,500 for 2024.
Okay. I thought that was the maintenance.
Yeah, I thought that was the annual contract maintenance.
It's all included in this implementation. 10,500 flat for this year. And then next, 2025, it's 2,500 all included.
Do we have to renew in the fourth quarter of 2024?
They, that I'll double check over. I don't believe so. Annually, it was 2,500.
We'll check, we'll double check that.
Okay, I'm going to highlight that.
I'll have to go through the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll highlight that to come, we'll circle back.
So I'm getting 12.
No, I'm not getting what you guys are getting, so.
Okay, so the difference in.
So we're doing supervisors versus.
Well, the town clerk, the difference in salary is plus 9,464.05. Association of towns, the difference is plus 800.
Right.
Records repair is minus 300.
Oh, all right.
Office and miscellaneous is plus 2,500.
Plus 25? Oh, all right, that's where I'm. 12.
12,464.
I'm still getting 11,964. I think my formula's funky. I'm going to fix it.
Just make sure that, yeah.
Is your supervisor tentative right?
Well, that's what I was thinking. My supervisor tentative is 86,000.
220,000.
208.
208, 81.
And then my town board is 232,17286.
Are you counting in the 500? What's in equipment?
Go to the town clerk's salary.
Nope, I'm not counting the 500 in equipment. Thank you.
I don't know what's going on with yours.
Stop it.
She said, I don't know what's going on with yours. The equipment's coming out or you're leaving it?
Leaving it. 500, okay. Records repair came out.
Okay.
Let me just sum this.
I was missing something.
Shelby's got it right. That's amazing.
Pretty much.
It's nice to.
I'd just like to know when I look at it later that it's not totally wacky.
Okay.
Should be now. Yep, now we got it.
What number are you getting?
12,46405.
BJ's just tossing her ends up.
That's it. I just have to fuck that myself.
Okay, next is town attorney. My proposal is 3%. The only change is training, conference, travel. I had added 3%, but we'll bring that back down to 2,000. That's the only actual change I have, unless you want to discuss the salary.
With the rest of our staff.
Okay, so you have the change in the travel, conference and travel.
Right.
Minus 240. Okay, next is engineer. Same thing, proposal was made. I proposed a 3% increase. I also proposed professional services at 20,000. And Joe proposed 12,000. So obviously, we'll go with his 12,000. But that gives you room to compensate because he's taking over more professional services. Did you want to compensate him in salary?
I know this isn't near where we wanted, but we could go to. Just keeping in mind some comments that were made in executive session. We could go to 149,496.
Based on the travel fact that you, the ferry thing?
No, really based on relative.
But he mentioned that exactly. Okay.
Yeah.
I remember.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, I wasn't thinking travel. I was thinking more, you know, he's proposing that we save, you know, $8,000 in professional services. That's substantial, so.
It's not really a savings though, Terry. Is it? Because it's just a savings versus what you proposed.
Oh, so it's a $3,000 savings, okay. Well, well, depends how you look at it. We modified the budget to 74,000.
I know. Big doings.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're going to get some of that back, right?
Yes.
The idea?
We don't control it.
I'm comfortable with the 2,000. Still keeps us down. It'll be minus 6,000, all of it.
So you're going 149,469? What was happening?
Yeah, 149.
149,496. 149,500.
I just hate.
Like round numbers.
Yeah, I hate.
Okay, so that category is minus 6,000. No, now it's not.
Now it's 12 should be 1.
Now it's 5,996.
So what professional services we're taking to 12, like proposed?
Yes.
And line 1420 dot 1 should be 150 if we're going to do this little rounding thing.
Which one?
Steven.
So what does that give you? 1500?
Oh, wait, we're back up in the chart.
150?
Yeah.
Just the whole, you want to round, you know.
Okay, yeah, I like that.
Do we have a thought as to when we're going to satisfy my stomach?
149,5?
I don't know.
What they're doing? One order pizza? 145,5?
One order pizza?
Yeah. Something. I brought a sandwich.
I have 149,5.
Okay.
Steve and I have 150.
And then.
So what's the, what's the change in engineer? What's the difference?
Oh, in engineer?
Yeah.
I have negative, or 5,996.
I have 5,996.
5,996, okay.
Yeah, I agree with Shelby.
Okay, green options.
Sorry, just had to say that.
What's that?
I said, I love Excel.
Green options, no changes.
You should have.
Public works.
Oh, when you first started?
And it was all handwritten, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
And then putting in changes after the fact.
Oh, God, my first year here, yeah. I was sitting there like trying to get this spreadsheet all right. Trying in the middle of the meeting.
Public works, the only change I have is taking Brian's name off of the. Anybody have any notes on anything?
Oh, wait.
Right.
Over time.
Overtime, well, weekends. So they were supervising 75,000. Department proposed 13,000, 13,000.
Okay.
But now, why did you feel the need to justify that?
I did, and I just, I should have, I could have put that down to 13,000, 13,000.
Green options, I had a note. We have been carrying over the.
Grant?
You should go with the proposed number. You have 4,450 left of that $5,000 grant.
How much left?
4,450.
Wow.
That would be reflected on the, it was 5,000, right?
4,700.
We just spent, oh, this year. And then we used 250.
We only used 250 for the Sylvester man thing?
Yeah.
I thought it was going to be like closer to 1,000.
No, we limited the buckets.
Tim has other stuff to give me. It's just the labels for the buckets he posted.
A bill for buckets.
I don't think he's giving me that yet.
Yeah, but you want me to look it up and tell you how much it should be?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have it in an email proposal.
What's your point?
Just, the budget shouldn't be 5,200.
They always keep 500 as just a base for office and miscellaneous, and then the remainders.
We pull from fund balance because we got.
The grant.
5,000,000 grant.
So you want to make that 500?
No.
What the hell are you saying?
What are you recommending?
So their budget usually for office and miscellaneous is $500. They got a grant, $5,000. So they didn't use it that year. So that's last year. Can you, our budget be 5,500, pull the 5,000 out of fund balance? Because that's where the money rolled into when it was unspent. So now this year, we're spending some. So it's going to be whatever is left over from the 4,700 that we started the year from that grant. So it's going to be like $1,000. So then the grants.
So why don't we just put 500 in and accommodate the rest?
Well, we like to show things broad so we know what we're doing. And it also helps us track.
But we will know what we're doing until we know.
There's no time limit on the grant?
No, no, they just, he, Tim is good. He goes back to them and checks in with them to make sure it's an allowable expenditure.
Why don't we put that in your grant?
Or if you want to just estimate 1,000 for right now.
It's easy, we like, because then it's in the line.
So what's your recommendation here?
We're waiting for Meg to pull up the.
I think I have it.
I can look too.
The buckets?
Yeah, that came from Sarah, I think.
Right, but her numbers.
My wife can't wait to land, do you?
Fixed it.
Mine's getting.
I mean, the bugs are, I had to put it outside, add it on the porch.
Yes.
Yeah.
Move that outside, but I was always worried about the raccoons opening it up, you know.
The only hope for the flies are the old-fashioned flypaper, which is so attractive hanging.
Now, in the house.
Dead in life for the works.
How much?
1,145.10 should be the total that comes out.
That includes the stickers.
That includes the stickers, yeah. Because the label should, should have been like $320 or something like that-ish.
216.
Give you that number one last time, I'm sorry.
1,145.10. I think that's what we did in the resolution.
So it sounds to me like the bottom line of 5,200 can be modified.
To what?
Amber's going to tell us. Yes, so that number becomes 4,055. So I'm not putting patents in.
Yeah.
4,055?
The cover sheet, yeah.
And then on the cover sheet, Shelby, if you just put the pull at 3,555. Let me do the same, so I don't forget.
Is it right along?
Minus 1,145.
But not really. Like, don't count the.
Don't count it?
Not the savings.
Okay.
Because.
Dang it.
That much less from fund balance.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so public works.
There is a method to the math. Um, and Shelby knows it so that if I get hit by a truck. It's always.
Someone knows it.
No, we're more thinking that you could get hit at home plate. Jealous, jealous fifty-year-old that wants to score, to run, and take out a catcher.
If they put me back into sketch.
We have.
I've known through that.
Are you playing?
Yeah. I signed up to play it. I did two years ago.
Were you with, uh, college, high school player?
I thought it was last year.
Um, I didn't last year because I was at, um, I think either my.
You were away.
Or funeral last year.
Yeah.
But no, so I didn't play last year. We have.
Yeah, yeah.
Four of us could play. Heaven forbid somebody hit a car.
So no comments on public works?
No, there's guys, there's lots of guys.
Anyway, the big one for me is custodians.
The custodians.
Custodians, I believe we, um, yeah, garnered some efficiencies with some personnel changes that will carry through twenty twenty-four, and my number there is fifty-five thousand.
Minus two.
Okay.
Um, I think I don't almost overtime, right, so we already settled.
So we go one sixty-six to fifty-five?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're also taking, yes, so that was an eleven thousand dollar savings, and then we're picking up another seventy-five hundred on overtime.
Which, you know, just like pray to the weather gods.
And then the.
What's your final number for?
The overtime number is now what?
The thirteen, didn't we say thirteen?
Um, I wrote down ten.
Oh, you wrote down ten?
Or I had thirteen and then I overwrote it down to ten.
Let's go with, let's go with the ten, we're not getting anywhere.
Custodians, you brought to fifty-five?
Yes, because in twenty twenty-two, we had ninety-five hundred dollars worth of overtime, right? I'm not tracking to that, and that overtime isn't weather dependent.
Oh, right.
It's dependent upon what the custodians or.
Yes, that's right, that was COVID, we were still.
Right, cause I was double cleaning and things like that.
Yes.
It's, uh, it's Debbie, it's Amanda, it's the custodians.
Okay.
So you picked up eighteen thousand five hundred.
Yep, all right, now.
That's, that's something.
Parks and beaches needs a new rake is one of my notes, but that would not come out of, this would be capital equipment, wouldn't it be? A new rake? That's a big thing that they pulled behind.
Mm-hmm, with the beach.
I don't really have seen that in capital equipment budget.
No, cause it wasn't, it wasn't submitted at the time.
I think it was. Yeah, I think it was Ken mentioning it here, but I'm not sure.
The ground and maintenance that. Why was that low?
No, this is another, um, yeah.
I guess. He said we can combine ground and maintenance with parks and beaches.
Now, just as, just as future thing, Amber, next year of springtime, when we sit down with a Crescent Beach, uh, Sunset Beach, since we do rake the entire beach, you know, and how about, how about, how about some of those maintenance costs be encumbered by, you know.
Since that beach picked up for the entire.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, well, the entire bed.
Yeah.
I thought they were only doing.
No, I said they pay for all.
No.
So they're contributing.
All right.
Have they, and have they given us that money yet?
I don't know.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But we're doing, you're doing a resolution like.
Okay, I'm just gonna stay.
Just out of curiosity, on the, on the, how bad are bathrooms, was it six or seven? How bad, uh, how bad's the total, about six? Last year, I thought we had seven at over eight thousand dollars.
Seven, seven thousand.
Yeah, that total was in the seven to eight, eight thousand dollar range, all right, that's, that's, that's something we should know, know.
Happy, happy to be here. So the question on parks and beaches and ground maintenance, I wasn't at the meeting with.
I answered my own question, I remember he saves that for the end of the year.
Yeah.
And then does all the maintenance on the mowers and all that stuff, just in case something comes up and he has to buy.
Right, which is why we're so under budget here.
That's why I was like, why is it so under budget?
In twenty-one, he had a decent amount left over, and he did what he does. What's it towards future purchases?
Mm-hmm.
Last year, the big pull from that account was the flag pole.
Right.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
This year, the big pull could be the, uh, rake, beach rake.
Beach rake. Beach rake, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that's good. Um, and note, what's that?
Another thing that I have. Oh, was mower repairs was the next line.
Mm-hmm.
The fourteen ninety point four one six. But that five thousand should get moved to.
Parks again.
DA, oh, DA.
Or DA?
It's DA, uh, fifty-one thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we gotta take that out of here.
Mm-hmm.
Minus. Five thousand. Um, could go up one please, or two. Uh, jetties and bulkheads. Can this be WMAC is my note.
Yeah, I have the, F W M A C poll, question mark.
Yeah.
I think that we didn't, and it's like part of the whole WMAC unbalance thing that we should.
Right, that we have to remove.
Right.
Everything that you see is your spreadsheet, got the highlights.
Yeah.
Those are money, that's gonna be used. That's waterways monies.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we did the jetties and bulkheads because when we looked at it last year, the pull from waterways by at, we were adding in too much.
Yes, there wasn't enough to revenue.
Needed to bring it back down because we didn't want the balance to drop below a hundred and fifty thousand or something.
I also thought we didn't feel that jetties and bulkheads were really waterways, it was more waterfront, you know.
Correct, and I, and I agree with that.
I think our.
Amber, I agree with that number, that's why I was asking for that before. I think the safe number in there is, uh, one hundred fifty thousand. We've been over three at times.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we vacillate, you know, most of the time, we're in the twos, lower, mid, or high.
But talk again about why you want that kind of balance.
We don't wanna balance, we wanna, we, we're offsetting.
She wants a balance.
Well, we wanna offset, we wanna, all these highlighted ones, we wanna be able to offset with revenue. Right. Boring fees.
Right.
And Amber wants a cushion that we keep in there for unexpected.
If we had a failure.
Emergency, fail, right.
Yeah, I mean, if it was, you know, storm related, we might be able to get fee of money or short money for it.
Like Dawn Lane, like Dawn Lane.
Um, but.
Yeah.
Right.
That type of thing.
Some that may help be covered, so just.
But, but it's a failure of a bulkhead.
That's what you're talking about.
Right.
Yes.
So if you are gonna cover, use WMAC reserve, I'll call it, to cover the repair of a, an emergency repair of a.
Going like.
And why would we not then, same thing apply to the maintenance of the, uh, jetties and bulkheads, at least the bulkheads?
Let's highlight it and then when we do the analysis.
Okay.
Because we still have more of the, more in fee increase rolling on.
Right.
And I'm. Which actually never just get that analysis.
In fact, that emergency at Dawn Lane impacted other projects.
Yeah, Congdon Creek.
Congdon Creek.
You know, this K, uh, what is this, uh, you know, ninety, section ninety town code, K, five dash K. Revenues collected hereunder shall be applied primarily to the administrative expenses of the chapter, primarily, that's interesting, and to projects and services associated with the management, protection, and enhancement of town waters and town-owned underwater lands. So enhancement, protection of town waters, I don't think it's a stretch to say the bulkheads and jetties, so if we do have the money, let's.
Okay, sorry, I forgot highlights to revisit.
Yeah, cause that could be significant, I mean, that's nuts, you know, that's twenty grand, but still, since we're failing so miserably, it's fine. It's significant, yeah. Okay, I have two.
Any else from Brian?
Um. All right, let's see. I think everything else was pretty darn reasonable.
Yeah, under dredging, we, uh, I made a note there.
Moved to, yeah.
Moved to WMAC, that was.
Dredging.
I have that, that's one of the highlighted areas that were taken using WMAC.
Yeah, we are already.
Yeah.
And then we were keeping just in case the parks and beaches bathroom maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
That's more than just Crescent Beach, it always also covers.
Right.
Leagues.
Am I right, we just went back into the negative eleven thousand five?
Wait, but.
No.
Did we use that money?
We didn't use any of it this year.
That's what I'm asking, you know.
What do you mean?
We need that big of safety valve or?
Fourteen ninety point four nine seven.
Only because, I mean, you, you talked about history of those bathrooms being old, and now we have brand new.
Yeah, but it's vandalism, I guess we need to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know, last year was vandalism, I don't think we had.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's safe to say the new one, we don't, well, we should say that.
And the pump out is in a different.
The vandalism at Wayne's Beach, we.
Yeah.
Pump out, yeah, that cost us some money in twenty twenty-two.
Sort of the question is, do we need that much?
No, that's where the pump out comes out of.
Main, ethriment.
Out of, uh, four ninety-seven.
Kind of like the resolution.
Didn't you have any?
Right.
To accept the money, we'll have that.
What did we use last year?
Yes, yeah, so we'll post it.
I don't think this line, what this line.
Sure.
Yeah, we just had everything coming out of parks and beaches last year, and then we decided to separate out so you could see how much.
Yeah.
The pump outs would cost.
Yeah, so this is kind of the pump out line, yeah.
Yes, let me. Do you know how much it cost us something like this?
Didn't cost us anything this year.
Well, no, no, but.
Growing up great.
Around eight.
Right.
Yeah, so I think Sunset Beach paid us seven.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, Wayne's Beach, we initially, you know, six years ago, put in the beginnings of what looked like an IA system in the, behind the. We ever burnt that over?
No.
Nope. So, so why? That's my question is.
Oh, yeah.
Why, why did we, why, why, why did we put that system in the ground, it's in the ground, everything was now what that.
Yeah, it's fitted, it's, it's not completed, and we haven't expended the money from W Q I to complete that IA conversion. It became a bigger project.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Much bigger, bigger project.
Do we, well, we need to ask those que, the question, is the intent to do that in the near future? That would be paid for.
If there's money in this year, would we not, trying to encumber it?
I think part of that, I mean, we need to bring Brian in to ask that question.
Yeah.
Because I think Jay was very big on it, um, Jay and John, like, got the whole thing started, and then Brian came in, and I thought.
I don't wanna say concluded.
Does it pull Joe into being some of the health department?
Yeah, the ramp up time, yeah, I was gonna say, I thought the ramp up time for when it would become actually functional and give some benefit was in question because of the short season.
Well, that's not as much of an issue.
As the, the requirements that the health department was putting on the system, it expanded the system significantly. It made it significantly larger than what we currently have there.
Okay.
So, talk to Joe. Okay, cause we have twenty thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars set aside in W Q I money for that.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so if it's not going to get.
Done, right.
Twenty thousand, how much?
Twenty thousand eight sixty.
Yeah, because they did the calculations based on parking spaces, not on.
Yeah, that's what the county wants it on.
Not on the flow rate of the bathroom.
Right, right.
Which.
Would, would have been a huge.
Based on parking spaces makes it enormous, like an enormous system.
Biggest thing on the island.
And, yeah, and instead of basing it off the flow rate of that restroom itself, which we actually have monitoring on, so we can tell them exactly what the flow rate is, so. Oh. We were attempting to have a negotiation with them, can we utilize the flow rate that we've collected over the past few years as our standard flow for that system and size it appropriately as opposed to sizing it for the parking lot, which, if you calculate how many people per car per parking spot, that's where it gets insane.
Yeah.
So that was a negotiation that had to help them with the health department. So you wanted to ask Joe with that, I mean.
I'm writing that down.
Okay.
We're tasking Jim with that.
Well, cause at that point, I think we had only had one year of, of logging the, what the flow was in that, like, metering.
Right, metering.
Yeah. So if we have multiple years of metering that shows consistent data that this is the flow, then it's a stronger argument for the health department, yeah.
So, in other words, you want me to go with the flow? And you don't want me to poo-poo this?
God.
Strictly off the record.
Griswold, Chris. Channeling, yeah.
Okay, okay, so in, in public works, we've eliminated eighteen thousand five hundred, and we moved five thousand to DA.
Mm-hmm.
Progress is our most important product. Town board buildings.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Just gonna do that real quick.
IT media.
Oh, okay, repairs and maintenance is low because of next door, okay. Right?
Um, I propose that we go to one o'clock, have a lunch break, and then pick it up so that we're not forced to like zip through this stuff, you know, cause you get hungry. So, got another half hour now, yep, is that okay?
When's the pizza coming?
Christina ordered it. IT media, uh, I wasn't here for that, but.
It'd be twelve forty-five, yeah.
Forty-five, yeah, okay.
It'd be, I brought some food, but I just.
Amber, wanna do media?
No.
The island.
IT media.
Okay, yes, so wait.
Town board buildings, we said that's just gonna stay the same?
There is.
Uh, yes, we. No changes there.
Okay.
Okay, so then, let me just, it's over, so IT and media, here, we do have some changes, so.
We can knock down the.
Hold on, I.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. But better time, we could cut because we're not. We've got it covered within everybody's duties.
Amber, just, I, I don't need to go back up.
Mm-hmm.
The buildings, are we satisfied with the, uh, medical building, what we charge for electrical and, uh, heating and things of that nature?
Isn't it different?
Oh, that's a different, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, we have, that's, we have medical centers in place, yes, yeah. Okay, so for IT and media, um, so we're, we cut the overtime.
Okay.
To zero, for Kevin. And then the equipment stays at thirty-three. And the.
The equipment staying at thirty-three?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we were gonna use. Where did the.
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't that hers? The power work thirty grands.
And maintenance.
That's in maintenance.
The equipment is hard.
That's right, that's it.
It's hard, okay.
So what we're doing with the maintenance line is generated, taken the ninety-nine nine eighty, cut it, and then added thirty, which the number can be a hundred and ten thousand. Four eight.
One ten four eighty?
Rather than one twenty-two?
Correct.
One hundred and ten thousand.
Let me just double check to make sure.
Four eighty? Have you just said four eighty?
Yes, yes, because it is, I wanna just double check, cause I wrote it down, but. It was the ninety-nine nine eighty, which Kevin gave us, which is a hard number, we need all of those raises and stuff that we need.
Yeah, we took the overs but it's out.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And we're adding ten thousand five hundred.
We're done maintenance, yeah, we took that from one twenty-two.
I think Amber's finding that in her budget this year?
Yeah.
Is she, if she is, can, she have jumped her in?
Yeah.
Ten four eight.
I think she has that money and she, we can encumber it if she gets a contract.
This year.
Yeah, or she can.
That would be.
Use that money this year.
Thanks. Amber, you've, listening?
Sorry, yes, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, so you're finding the money for your software in twenty twenty-three?
Yes, so I still have balances left in the deputy line and there's balances left over in office miscellaneous because I transferred some money, so I planned on buying a new desk and new equipment. Obviously, the software is more important, so whatever I have left over after that, that's what I planned on doing with other things with the office.
Okay, good. All right, so that goes down to nine, ninety-nine thousand nine eighty.
Which line?
Maintenance. It's the sixteen eighty point four seven six.
Ninety-nine?
Nine eighty.
Nine eighty.
Can we just make it a hundred?
Right, for twenty dollars.
Oh, sure. I mean, I know Kevin has a detailed line.
You watch Monk?
No. We can make it a hundred thousand.
Good show.
Although, yes, Jerry, I Like this thing just drive me crazy here after year.
So we're making it a hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've gained twenty-three thousand five hundred in this.
So right now I have us gaining in total fifty-four thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
Almost half a percent.
We're getting there, guys.
Twenty-three five?
Yeah.
A good one. Okay, Town Board, other items? Numbers, contingent, embryo.
I haven't had a chance to finish that calculation.
Okay.
So
I should just highlight that?
I will highlight it, yes. Yeah.
Okay. What's in, what is that about?
Let's see, contingent?
Yes.
Um, we have, generally, we put in a certain number for just covering the unexpected things during the course of the year. And then we also are in contract negotiations with PBA and Highway. So we put in an estimated increase of where we think we're going to land with negotiations. But we don't want to tip our hand, so we put it there. But if we finish, if we can settle, finalize the contract negotiations before we put the budget to bed, we will
Right.
re-allocate.
If you look at what we adopted and what we modified, it was the same thing last year. We had two outstanding contracts. And we, when we modified it, we took that money out.
Trying to do that.
Okay, next is Police. The first thing I have is the new car, anything before that, right?
The MTA payroll stays the same, right? No, I mean
Wait, where are you?
MTA payroll.
MTA payroll.
That, I think
That went up.
Calculates.
That's from Barbara.
Based on Barbara.
Yeah.
Yeah. It stays the same for what we proposed, it went up from last year.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there was a percentage, the increase to hide the top.
Okay, so the first thing in Police that I have is the new car. Again, Chief gave us what it cost this year. I took what we budgeted last year and tried to split the difference. But reality is, what it cost is what it cost, so. The actual was fifty-two K, wasn't it? Yes.
Okay.
So it's up to fifty-two? Okay. And the next one I have is the telephones, and that should be telephone slash modems. There's more than just the phones. And again, the Chief projected that out to be twenty-two thousand. It went from sixteen five, so I tried to cut it down a little, but he felt that that's a real number, twenty-two thousand.
So we bring that back up to twenty-two thousand? Yes.
Those are the only two notes I have.
Um, ARPA money, bottom line, contracts, which
Well, that we're gonna go over everything.
Okay.
You know, that's, at the end, we'll do that with revenues.
Just refreshing, drawing a blank for a second. Where are the tasers? What line are they?
That's
Tasers are in capital, I think.
No, he said that's in point four nine one.
Four nine one.
Ten thousand, he said.
Oh, do you know?
These are contracts or
Oh, yeah, right, and radio. Yeah, 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 right.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So of the ARPA
So just, so just write yourself a note there, Arthur.
Yeah, I had eleven, one hundred and eleven thousand for that line because I had the tasers included in this, you can take out ten K and count.
I mean, if you want to go over that now, we can.
Arthur?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
I mean, related to these lines.
Um, no, let's do it at the end because we're, we're not gonna reduce these expenditure lines because we're going to actually spend to them. It's on the pulling from fund balance, because ARPA money is sitting in fund balance right now. So when we're pulling that money out of fund balance, that happens on the cover sheet.
Gotcha.
Oh.
Okay.
Because we want to show
Okay.
Like
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Monk, okay, anybody else have anything on Police?
No.
Okay, jails, everything stays the same?
So actually, oh, did you want, yeah, so that was an increase.
It was an increase.
So we just fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five?
Yeah.
I have five, or am I missing five?
Thirty-five hundred, new car.
I have the new car I had at fifty-two thousand.
Yes. Yeah, from forty-eight five.
Forty-eight five, yeah.
And then I had telephone and modems go to twenty-two.
Yep.
And then the contract stayed the same, so.
It becomes like ten thousand for what you were talking about with the contracts.
No, I don't.
Yeah, thirty-five hundred in the new car and two thousand in the modems.
Okay. Shelby, can you pull up jail attendance for a couple of years? Thirty-one fifty dot one.
Yeah, BJ, I'm probably with you on that. I, I would say that we could probably tweak that down if you wanted to. But I, but I just want you to understand that we're tweaking that down because we're spending more in overtime for police officers on that role. With the changes in, in law throughout the state, we, I can't let a police officer leave an arrest until the DA reviews the complete packet. So we are spending a little less in jail, but quite frankly, at the end of the year, I usually shift that to overtime because we end up short on overtime. But, but I, I would agree with you that that isn't that accurate because that number is less because, you know, we had somebody last night, I had a police officer most of the time because we were, we needed it for paperwork reasons.
Okay.
It's better to leave it there, we can transfer it. I'm looking at him.
Two thousand twenty.
Yeah. And that includes transfers that he might have made to overtime. I don't know, Jim, if you're comfortable, I wouldn't mind going to five thousand based on the last two years.
No, no, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, I have no problem.
Just going to five thousand rather than seventy-five?
Yeah.
And that'll force me in the future to kind of look at that on the other line, the actual line, instead of balancing it that way.
Right. Okay, next is animal control. This, we had a discussion with Bo and Dr. Bev Lacher and the Chief the other day. If we go down to deer reduction management, I had proposed, they had proposed deer reduction management and habitat management.
Can we stay up top just for a second?
On which?
I have a suggestion written down about animal control, Jenny?
Well, no, can I go the other way?
Okay, go the other way.
I'll get into it, that's all, get the money. Okay, so we have deer reduction management. I had kept that sixty thousand dollars, which it was when we had the four poster and we had committed that we would keep that money for reduction. So they broke it down this year to deer reduction management and habitat management, thirty-six thousand and twenty thousand for a total of fifty-six thousand. So if we go with their fifty-six thousand, that's four thousand less than I proposed. And I'm proposing we take that four thousand and put it in Jenny's salary.
Yeah. I I was not comfortable with the presentation knowing what things are gonna cost. That's all, you know, I mean, I just can't be, it was a little vague. Of, you know, about what's gonna get spent next year in habitat management.
Right. Say that again?
What's the real plan?
I just wanted to make sure, like, that's what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
We don't know what the costs are and therefore you don't want to budget it.
Yeah, or I want to budget it, but I'm just uncomfortable with the number.
Okay, so I
The plan to me is twofold. One, the CPF has to get it all organized with their lands
Yes.
and their management. Then we have to decide what town lands are not part of the CPF that, you know, we need to use this money for.
Right, so, right, so
To what Jerry's saying, for this line item, I don't think we can justify it yet. Habitat management for this specifically. I think that deer intake should work with CPF and start the program on CPF properties.
Yes.
Once they have a program and they establish works and they have the group of people that are gonna work to do it, then expand it to town-owned properties, once you know what the cost and the time and the expenditure will be, with an actual budget line item saying, we want to work on these three town-owned properties, this is what the cost will be to implement it. But I think that they can start this habitat management program on CPF properties using CPF monies as part of their stewardship plans. So I think that partnership should happen now. And once they have that established, then come to us and say, now we want to apply this to town-owned lands, this is what we need.
Yeah.
That's, and I don't think we're there yet.
Jim, my only, my concern is, years ago, we had a, a specific hunter who was like unbelievable. I mean, he was a killing machine. And, you know, and we
We mean that in a good way.
Well, he called the herd. You know, he was, he was financially, you know, taken care of. And I'd hate to take the money out if that's a potential, you know, recovery, if that could happen again. Because we tried to call the herd, but it seems like we can't get the hunters anymore.
Well, first, there's two things here. Number one is doing this legally and above board.
Yes.
If you go back in time, maybe that roving midnight, six AM hunter in his truck going around the island and people picking up the phone saying, I hear gunshots at three AM, what is that? And they said, oh, send a police car out, and there's nothing there. I think that was something that people probably will no longer tolerate.
No, but I thought he was, was that
Going to that
No, and I, I think, I think, I think there was
Tell me
I don't, I don't want to say it because I don't want, you know, it just wasn't, it just didn't stack up, I don't think.
I mean, I know It's the mobile Right, how much would that
My, 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 my big plan, when it talks about deer management is twofold. Number one, you have to have recreational hunters and incentives for recreational hunters. And number two is, I think, the NUCOs. The NUCO program, need to entice people to get trained, to pay for that training, to get out that field, sign a contract with us saying that we pay for the NUCO training. This is what we're, this is what our goal is. You know, we'll cover the following costs and actually write up a contract with that person saying, you must hunt and produce X number of deer per year. So when you hunt in the months of February, March, and have just two NUCOs and Bo, they, they do meet a low end of a quota that they're trying to, you have goals every year. There were eighty, ninety, a hundred, a hundred doe.
Yeah.
Because then if you get that, say the infants of a hundred doe and it's one point five fawns,
Yeah.
you're, you're, you're actually taking down potentially two hundred and fifty more deer, that's why you have
I'll pay for how many we can get, but how many can we get?
NUCOs, trained.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
We don't know.
That, that's, that's the problem.
What does it cost to train a NUCO?
It's not the training, it's getting them.
Oh, just getting them.
Yeah, and, and I think it was, it's both an incentive and providing the incentive.
Yes.
Yesterday, I was putting a blind up with, with Dan at Sanctuary Pond with Dan. And Dan does the
Where's Sanctuary Pond?
Right behind the, right across the street from the man house, that big pond.
Oh, oh, right, okay.
Where Mike Glassby used to
Yeah.
Yeah. So that huge pond back there, which attracts a lot of great ducks in the wintertime. So we, we put that all in yesterday. Dan said to me, you know, he's one of the guys that does the butchering. And, and doing the butchering, he has made this, you know, he does in his own time, but he's very skilled at it. So we have now two people that actually do a lot of the, most of all the butchering and meets that end of it, which we used to not be able to have. So we got to pay for those butchering costs as well because that entices hunters to go out and get more and donate deer more and get more medicine out to the public. But at the same times, securing more property, but to me, it's, it's keeping recreational hunters. I, I guess, you know, what Julia's doing in terms of training new hunters, that's not gonna, you know, when you train a fifteen-year-old or a nineteen-year-old or something to, on bow and arrow, does that mean they're gonna become a future hunter? A certain percentage of these people may. I mean, Julia never hunted, and now she hunts, you know, so she's, she, but she's not targeting the number of deer that Jerry is talking about. That's why it's important, and the last thing I'll say is with Bo, his time in, in February and March, if you don't free him up a lot and get him out in the field, you know, the major problem we had a year ago was Sylvester Manor because to organize that over there, you had some health issues with Gunnar and his wife and stuff and hunting per tail there. We used to produce, you know, I'm gonna use numbers like sixty, eighty, ninety deer out of Sylvester Manor, which you could take now because they're there. But Schumacher's getting their quota all the time because totally hunting all the time. You know, so it's, it's
So I guess my question really was to kind of, I think where Meg was going with it. Do we want to cut back on the habitat management money? Or do we want to keep it for the NUCOs?
Here we go.
Is that kind of where you were going?
Here are some numbers, Shelby.
Okay, let's do numbers and then Jim has his hand up.
Oh, okay, twenty twenty, this line minus the fire.
Okay.
This is just like the hunter and
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And deer butchering.
Okay, twenty twenty, fifty-five thousand.
Okay. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-five thousand. Twenty twenty-two, fourteen thousand.
Oh, no.
Oh, god damn.
It's gone down, oh, sorry.
Fifty-five thousand, fourteen thousand. I put in mind, spend in the fifty-five thousand, I have to be honest with you if it meant more dead deer.
The money was there, we just, we couldn't
More that, yeah.
And I mean, maybe part of that too is COVID where people weren't working as much.
Right, so they had the time.
And it was also supplemental income.
And it was outdoors.
Chief?
Yeah.
The whole thing, chief, yeah.
Yeah.
If you're in agreement on not using the twenty thousand for habitat maintenance, which it sounds like you are, I would recommend you cut the twenty out. And if we have a need for more funding for NUCOs, let us come back to the board in, in the wintertime and say, wow, these NUCOs did way more than we thought. We, we could then go to the, a reserve fund for that. I, I just, I think Bo projected our NUCO need based on what our reality is. And, and I've said that to you all along, that we try to keep our budget as real as possible. So if you're going away from the trails, I would take the twenty out and let us come back to you if we need more funding. And we can, you can either choose to pull it from another fund or a reserve fund to, to fund it at that time, if it's needed.
At four eighty-six.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at it and I say, keep the thirty-six thousand for the deer reduction management and cut the twenty thousand for the habitat management. And then what was the total number you wanted to give to Jenny?
I was, the difference, take the four thousand from, yeah.
So that's fine.
I just want clarification, Julia isn't teaching hunting, she's teaching archery.
I know, I know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, because you, one of the two of you said hunting, she's teaching hunting, like that's
Basic archery.
Yes.
And the course.
Yes. I mean, maybe somebody someday will be Come hunting, but
Right.
So we're taking twenty thousand out?
Twenty thousand seven eighty.
Yeah, yesterday, there was a big meeting at the Connor property, the West Neck.
Seven eighty.
Was it seven eighty? Oh, I was given out the whole four thousand. Difference.
There was, there was a meeting at the West Neck property. So Gordon was there, Tim was there, Mr. Shepherd was there, the and they, they were looking at the plowing the stuff under, what do they call that?
Mudwood?
The ground, yeah.
Mudwood.
Yeah, and then I got a phone call this morning, bright and early this morning, from a neighbor who's also a lot of people stopped their car and wondered what was happening there. What was happening there was that we were tagging some of the evergreens to thin out the Christmas trees because they're literally growing together
Yeah.
and transplant them up, up near the golf course along West Neck, which we did once before, but never watered them and they all died, if you remember correctly, you know, up at the top of the hill. But there, those trees are dying along there and it's an accident rate, it happened, people coming up a hill, people hitting hard golf balls down a hill. All you have to do is shake just a little bit to the right and it's going right through a car windshield. So, you know, having some type of program, that's a good use of those evergreens right there. But the other thing was the strategize, so the gentleman this morning said, Jim, you can actually pull these roots up. Yeah, you get a bunch of volunteers and paid people, you meet on a Saturday, you go out there, everybody's goal is to pick a hundred, two hundred of these up out of the ground. You get down on your hands and knees with the shovel and a little spade and you pull these things up out of the ground. They are also going to thin some of the, the invasives that are growing around the bend, the trees that are, you know, the locusts that are growing there. Those things will stay active for a decade or more if you cut them. So all those locust trees that sent the runners out underneath, they pop trees up, that's just, just the way it happens. I, I
Let's take a break.
Take a, yeah. We're gonna take a twenty-minute break.
Um, let's say one thirty.
One thirty break, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Slowly.
Anybody online?
Oh, we got Amber and Julie. Okay, so we left off with NIMS.
Okay, I think we're at page thirteen. NIMS, emergency management, that stays the same. Yeah, stays the same. Town social worker, I had a note here, we were gonna ask Al or if you have this social worker, I asked on, we weren't sure if she needed to add any funding to that. So I'll just highlight that, just to touch base with her.
Got you.
See if there's any.
Yeah, because five hundred doesn't
It doesn't seem enough for professional service?
If she's gonna have a mentor or
It's like one session.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe two.
But it, that doesn't seem
Okay. Okay, EMS is the next one. Again, we didn't discuss it, but Jack had asked for longevity and I told him the board stance was position doesn't qualify for longevity. The other real issue is the salary, the ALS coverage per diem, going from two hundred forty-one thousand to four hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty. Everything else?
Ambulance maintenance, took a thousand bucks off. And travel and meetings, a thousand bucks off.
Wait, where did we take? Oh, oh, I see, ambulance maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. So enough, we're not proposing any changes from supervisors, but the ALS coverage, like
I'm not gonna cut that.
I was gonna say, it's not, it's sort of divided on.
No, I'm fine with it, but, but here's a, an argument that you can tell me for a bunch of reasons. I'll try to make it short because it might be totally wrong. But in my mind, if there were a practical cushion in fund balance to take half of that this year, you know, in our minds, you know
Because it's a one and a half percent increase of the budget.
And so next year, then you take the other, then next year, it's another
We're just building in, like, so we did half, then like we're hitting the budget three-quarter percent this year and then we've got a built-in automatic increase of three-quarters of a percent.
Next year, I, I know, but it does help the taxpayer to spread these out.
Yeah.
I think if you can. And that's my only solution to this, I don't need anything else.
I think it's gonna come down to what Amber decides, sees.
Yeah, but we see No, no, it's
What's, what's the real, not, I will wait, maybe
Yeah, yeah, no, no, the way the fund balance is.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, just in general, just using fund balance to cover operational things.
It's not a smart idea.
Isn't, yeah, because then next year, we just start off in the mind to begin with.
I know, but this is such a chunk.
Yes, it is.
And, and not a, not reoccurringly increasing. It's, it'll be increased, but in a normal line, not a miss, not double.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, of a big item, so
A major
And again, the way, the way Shelby and I read the fund balance is that, you know, we've been building it up. So Amber wants to make sure those numbers are correct before we
Yeah, because it just, it didn't look right to me. I couldn't, I couldn't tie into what my expectation was to where
Right.
It seemed like something was not It seemed like something was not.
Now, I, you know, I went into that meeting before Jack walked in here, sharing some of the same feelings PJ had about questioning it, about the worth of it. And, you know, was it an eighty-ten, an eighty-twenty split, you know, between day and night, between, you know, calls? Forty-one percent of them occurred between seven PM and seven AM. And, and then I started looking at some of the other things, the vehicle that's here and the medicines that are here, the qualifications, the training opportunities and everything else. And then I think about, the reality is, God forbid, I mean, you leave office, but you don't leave office. You leave office and something happens tragically to somebody next February, March, and they say, you know, I don't want to be walking anywhere and saying, somebody that's on your watch. You turn this down, plus my father, my mother, my sister, my brother, a son or daughter, their lives. I just think it's, you know, what is a human life worth? It's worth. They can't put a price on it. They can't put a price on it, especially if it's a close deal. So it's a hard reality. The other thing I was thinking of with all the other things I hear floating around out there, you cut something like this and say, yeah, but you're getting this and you're getting that, you know, whether it's a hydrologist or the planner, or this one or that one, and you have these salaries. But here's a life and death situation, you're taking this possibly away. It's a hard, it's a, it's almost mission impossible to try to argue anybody, you know, with this, so.
Uh, we did modify the budget this year. Okay, so, but we're still looking at a year-over-year increase, okay. Yeah.
A little.
Okay. So there's nothing here.
There's really nothing.
Really not.
Nothing, no.
Okay.
Medical Center?
Medical Center is pretty much the same thing.
But no, who, somebody start, oh, you start to have a question about the revenue side on that?
The electricity and the fuel, are we charging? Looks like we are.
This is, this is high revenue.
Yeah, this is the expenditure side, and if you go to page twenty-seven.
Yeah.
A twenty-four, ten.
Oh, twenty-four, ten.
That's why twenty-four is sort of looking side by side. Because we're getting rent. Twenty-one, two ninety-five.
Two twenty-four.
That's revenues on the bottom.
H twenty-seven.
Oh, good, I'm sorry.
H twenty-four, ten.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the rent for the, for the maintenance of the property plus all the utilities is a little under two thousand dollars a month? Basically, is what you're saying here.
What, it's under two thousand dollars a month?
Well, if, if you say it's twenty-one thousand, two ninety-five, we're getting in revenue or most, you know, that is rental fees. That is, that is.
Yeah, the rent is a rent and that's negotiated. So then our repairs and maintenance, we just want to keep an eye on that line. But then the electricity, if we, if we paid out twenty-four hundred and so far electricity reimbursement is zero. I guess that's a camper question.
Yeah, I was gonna say that in the past, this is all town clerk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Handles that.
Why is it only projected at a thousand? Is this?
Reimbursement, it should be reimbursement, and if we have it on the other side, right?
Is this the whole building though?
Yeah, the whole building is forty-one hundred for electricity. So that would be three, the three different units. But what percentage is the correct percentage to be billing them?
Well, it's all based on the square footage. And some of the square footage is not paying.
Yeah, but I don't know.
Sorry, I missed the question. Oh, sorry, guys.
That's right.
On my line.
Don't they pay for electricity at the, at the medical center? Getting, do you get checks? Have you gotten checks?
Yeah, I guess, or maybe you have to do the invoicing, Amber, to get the reimbursement.
So, so far off the top of my head, I'll have to recollect it when, again, but I know that they just sent in a check from the medical center from Southampton.
Yes.
It's probably just the rent. So, yeah, we, we need to get on the billing of the fuel, oil and electricity.
Yes.
So I'll follow up with Rob as well.
Yeah, that would be great.
I'm gonna just highlight those in the revenue section so we, we circle back and just double-check the lease.
You're getting out from the larger, the two portions of that, that full center, you know, not discounting the, well, you know, we do senior center.
Yeah. Check the lease with Dr. Kelt regarding utilities.
You know, that would be good to check, off the top of my head.
Well, you've got nothing.
Yeah, I want to.
Utilities also?
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing.
Maybe we could renegotiate that.
Yeah, we're trying to tighten the stay, it's a whole community key campaign.
Correct. Which has no rent, but.
Yes. Okay, so let's go back to, so we're just gonna see what the, break, actually, so that really, electricity, that should be, we should, yeah.
On the revenue side, yeah, I mean.
No, even on the appropriation side, we should.
It should be equal.
Yeah.
Well, they're never gonna be, they're never gonna be.
Well, that could be equal, but, you know, if, if the seniors are paying for it, it shouldn't all be in the medical center. In other words, do they have their own, does everybody have their own meter?
No, it's only paid by square footage. I thought it came into the place and I don't think, I don't think it was metered separately.
So we need to.
I think you, I think you took it and you divided by the square footage.
Four, four-five utilities. Is that like cable or?
I'm sure that is the case. There's a formula there, based on square footage.
Some PSEG stuff.
Okay, we'll check that.
There.
Yeah, we'll have to ask Rob too, because he, their office gets all those PSEG bills.
I'm actually gonna call him right now because it's going to bug me, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You've got a bunch of people right on your same wavelength.
Next is highway. I wasn't here for Brian's meeting, so I'm not sure if you have any changes.
Um, let's see.
Questions? This is page fifteen.
It was CDL stuff we moved.
Yeah.
CDL training.
And moved to DA fund.
Yeah.
Are you? What happened in the dilemma of what we, how much we were.
The training, we went to two people.
We're moving six thousand.
Two thousand rather nine thousand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, CD license and schooling, CDL drivers, rather than send three people, we sent two people and it went from nine thousand to six thousand. And we moved to the DA fund training.
Oh, I had a question back up in superintendent. I was superintendent. A two percent increase?
Yeah.
Is that a three percent?
That what it comes to?
No, that's what you put, you put in comment in.
Uh, I'm pretty sure I changed all of them to three, so, but if you do the math, you wanna check it?
Yeah.
You know, I might not have changed the note, I might not have changed the notes, but.
That should be seventy-five, three ninety-one. We have the formula, actually, what I'm looking at is two percent, it's just like that.
Seventy-five, three ninety-one.
It's public.
Five, three ninety-one is what I got.
What'd you get?
Seventy-five, three ninety-one.
In the DA fund, just thinking about the training for this.
Mm, CDL.
Yeah, I have a call in for, to Brian.
Is to where, to put it, yeah, because, I mean, does it belong in Russian weeds or?
Yeah.
It's.
Yeah.
Called him the other day, but he was not there, so.
Yeah, because, I mean, Russian weeds, is it? Should it be the DB roads?
Yeah, no.
Which is not.
It's oil. Isn't it mostly for people who are driving trucks off-island to go deliver?
Yeah.
That would be, yeah.
That would feel, right?
Yeah.
I think he was.
He was explaining something about that. That it's not all just the.
Because some of it was trucking the Russian, no.
I don't know if he needs like highway guys to have a CDL. Like, do the trucks require a CDL, like do road cleanup with some of the larger? I know certain sized dump trucks require CDL, things like that, so.
Yeah, because I think the guys that truck the stuff off-island, I've been doing that and they already have.
Their license.
Yeah.
I'm gonna leave that at my thousand, or I, like, I'm proposing to leave it at my thousand highlighted because I don't want to lose it.
Right.
You know, like we, oh, yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay. Town, what other items is the same? Waterways management, uh, this, again, okay, this is what we discussed earlier. So I'm gonna eliminate the nine thousand four hundred sixty-four from this, that becomes zero. The seven thousand three hundred eighty-seven thirty-one stays the same. But we have to add the clerk, actually, we can just change nine thousand four sixty-nine to ten thousand. Okay? And take out Amber's name.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Just make it clerk and it's, and it's not Kay Martin, it's Catherine.
Okay.
Do you have to discuss that?
You have to discuss?
Yeah.
Give me two talks about it, but.
I did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And it's ten thousand even?
Yeah.
So.
I went over all the hours and it's, it's an increase in our hours. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay.
And, yeah, I think it just, at some point, because we've had some different moves and changes and stuff like that, I just, at some point I want to sit down and like look exactly with how all the pieces are fitting.
I have it, I have, I have.
There's a tab, there's ER. Or figure.
ER breakdown, yeah. But now, you know, would Catherine reflect that? Yeah, there is.
I might, I might, I have an, I have an update, I'll, I'll give it to everybody.
Mine.
Yeah. Okay, town, what other?
Yeah, because there's no hours written in there.
Yeah, I have it, I have it. Okay, town, what other items? Berry Study, Publicity and Park and Legion, keep the same. Looking out to the nutrition.
Shelby, maybe at some point, you know, like you have a tab, maybe a tab for WMAC expenditures, you know, a separate little sheet.
Is everything working?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since it's coming from, I mean, it's going to different places.
So we're up to Berry Study?
Where, yeah, none of those change. So if we go to nutrition, the only change I have here is supplies and rent, office miscellaneous. We're at twenty-four, six, I proposed keeping it the same, but Kelly came in and gave a proposal, twenty-nine thousand. I think that was based on.
She got a rent increase.
Rent increase and.
Wait, which?
Uh, A sixty-seven, seventy-two, point four eight four.
Rent is going to two thousand.
Mm-hmm. So that line is going to?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Oh, okay, so. Yeah, I still want to keep it the same.
Well, I mean, we can try to cut it out the areas that compensate for the rent increase, but. Yeah.
That increased us four thousand. Here to increase. It's twenty-four of that and then.
Yeah. Four thousand four hundred and one dollars.
I don't have the one hundred and forty-four.
Oh, okay, I see what happened when I drank. Forty-four hundred.
Next page, residential repair. I think stays as proposed.
This is all reimbursed, right?
Yeah. Next is silver circle.
There's a question about a driving grant.
Sergeant, shoot, what?
A test drill.
Okay, all I saw was shooter, okay.
Yeah, no, it's a test drill, active shooter drill at the shelter around the school.
Yeah.
And now my phone just now kicks it to me. I got a text message that was sent to me forty minutes ago, just like five minutes ago. You're getting no service. Emergency alerts?
Yeah.
Emergency alert, sorry. I just need a new phone, mine's dying.
Okay, so next we're doing silver circle. This would do, just doing some moving around of numbers. Between this and the senior center.
Senior Center. Add the part-time assistant, that's twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, that's two forty, two seventy-two.
Yeah. Those are the twenty-seven, eight.
Yeah, I think I.
Which one? Senior Center?
Uh, in the senior center.
A sixty-seven, seventy-seven, point one four seven.
I think I just took the rate.
What was the rate?
I think we changed the hours. No, we didn't.
Just check. Twenty-one hours at twenty-three oh nine.
Thank you.
So what's the, what's the total?
Twenty-five, two fourteen.
Okay.
Two thousand dollars you're gaining on.
The next one, senior shopping, that's all wash, that's a, any grant?
Wait a minute, did that fuel come here? Okay, so we, we just took fuel out from above, right? Um, fuel, we took it from senior nutri.
No, we took it from nutrition and put it in, yeah.
No, silver circle, right?
Took it from silver circle and put it in drivers for.
Triple-A driver.
I have moving to senior center line, fuel. Oh, fuel was for, okay, for driving. See it in senior center line? I mean, is it folded into?
It's a triple-A driver, I think.
Well, that should have increased then, right, from last year?
Going from ten-four to eighteen.
To, right, yeah. Or are you?
One forty-five, point one four five.
Point one four five, oh, the dri, oh, it went. Why would fuel go in the driver, though? That's what I'm confused about.
Because it's all related to the driver, it's all the same category.
Right, but then down below, you have a triple-A expenses and car maintenance.
Right.
Wouldn't that be a better place for it?
I think, yeah, because it was only supposed to be the driver.
Then it should be.
It's, it's personnel services, personnel services. So if you go back a page, the drivers under silver circle.
Oh, yes.
Got that. Went to zero.
Yeah, I mean, my notes says move drivers, fuel to senior center.
Right.
Didn't say which line to move it to.
Seven thousand, no, four thousand. The driver, let's say, four thousand then goes to.
Thirteen thousand four hundred. A lot of that budget to eighteen thousand.
Right.
But I have a note on that line in particular to add the federal program. So were you able to get together with Barbara on the transportation grant?
No, she was still looking at her files. She's like, I don't know which one she, to look at. But she's mixing them up like you got.
Yeah, yeah. The shopping assistance.
So we're gonna move the, the, some of the money from triple A driver down to triple A expenses.
No.
No. Although.
Yes.
We were moving.
We took the fuel from the other line, from the silver circle.
Let's, let's.
Took drivers and fuel from silver circle.
Right.
Some of it we're gonna put in drivers and senior center.
Four thousand.
Some of it we're gonna put in.
And I don't think.
A expenses.
I don't think the fuel happened because we should have moved, let's just say twenty-eight hundred from fuel.
Silver circle.
Twenty-eight hundred dollars should go to fuel now at, um, or AA expenses and car maintenance. But we did not add twenty-eight hundred dollars there.
We added, we took, also took out forty, forty-two, twenty-four in the driver.
We what?
Yeah. Only used a hundred and sixteen dollars.
Right, but I, but I thought she was, we've trained, training more, another driver and that program should go up. Should, she wants to do more trips. Kelly's pretty adamant about that, great, I think that's fabulous. So maybe not the full amount, but some amount should come over to here.
Yes.
We took seventy-one twenty out of silver circle.
Right, and only four thousand is being reflected in the driver line. Or five thousand in the driver line. There's nothing being reflected in the, um. The A triple A expenses and car maintenance.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So let's put twenty-one hundred in there?
That's what I'm thinking. Even two.
Take it to fifty-three hundred.
Yeah. All right.
Can we move on to recreation?
Yeah, except for senior shopping assistance.
Yeah, that's all.
Thanks.
Pay.
Fund related.
And it's also in the revenues equally.
That's what I mean, yeah. Okay, so this, the first discussion is Bethany's salary. And I wasn't here when she made her presentation, that she would be, I could be compensated the same as senior director.
Town study. We're gonna compensate for the same. And she, each of the, um. Seven oh two oh, it should be thirty-six fifty dollars. So thirty-six zero five zero.
What's her proposal? Why is that five thousand dollars less than her proposal?
She wanted it to be the same in plus three percent.
Oh, okay, so we'll bring it to the same, and the same, we mean same in twenty-twenty-four?
She wanted the same hourly.
Oh, the same hourly.
And she works five hours more.
Miss, miss spreadsheet?
That's it.
So back to back. Five times forty. So then that would be forty-one two hundred.
Forty-one two hundred.
Okay, now I understand.
Emily? No. Sorry. The next is recades where my spreadsheet is telling me I've got an inconsistent formula. Why? It's like eight, eight, it should be eights, yeah. Jerry's number might be wrong by a little bit on recades. I think it's.
Just cause there's the plus. So what was?
The one column.
Nine nine two.
Right, nine nine two two three two is the number.
Right. Yeah, no, mine did the seven.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, if you copy. Mm-hmm. Yeah. That's happened to me a few times where.
Uh-huh.
So, yeah, for Emily.
So, uh, Bethany's proposing ten percent increase for Emily. Propose two percent.
And we can look, will she be on the clerk breakdown? No, she's not. She's on a different sheet, though. You did put.
Two percent or three percent?
Three percent. No, what, three percent, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
You have three percent.
I have three percent, yeah.
You sent us some sheets on this, didn't you?
Yeah, she's on that.
I have something for you guys. Yeah, find it.
Big part of our proposal is the change in the insurance contribution.
Right.
So we really need to have that number with the Steve. How it affects percentage rise, everybody's.
Yeah.
Keep going and.
Okay.
And we'll, yeah, we'll come back and do all the salaries at one.
Yeah.
Cause I have notes. And it may not be today if we wanna do.
It won't be today.
Yeah, breakdown.
Yeah, all right, so we're gonna underline Emily.
This one. Oh, here's.
So are we go, we're going with Bethany's equal to Kelly?
Let's, let's do them all at once.
Okay.
Let's.
Okay, just gonna circle.
I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, so it's the same on the next line, too, both of them.
So we're going back to the.
The next one, you said.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I'm going back to fix Bethany if we're not making a decision.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. Although, it is compelling argument. No, I agree, I think that her and Emily both.
I mean, Bethany I'd like to do.
Yeah.
And, and I'll be honest, you know.
Was it forty-one two?
Forty-one two.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave in there, but I have pulled off by my.
Excellent.
Insurance.
Put it in with.
Just have a look. They get the principal.
And I'm, and, uh, Emily, I'm underlining. Anybody have notes on recreation?
No.
No.
Uh, that program at the bottom that, uh, there's, you know, I guess that youth ornament program.
Yeah, that would.
That's a revenue, has a revenue attached, right?
Um, it has fund balance.
Fund balance attached, right.
Grants, we just haven't discounted yet, and we'll pull that out.
Okay.
You can pull that twenty-five out?
Not this, Steve's gonna know about pulling it.
Wait, wait, wait.
Party is pulled on the cover.
Lifeguards, let's just look at lifeguards, they're all paid, right?
They're paid in full show?
I think there's still some September that's not in there.
Okay, and we did have a shortage of lifeguards this year, which we hope not to have.
Yeah, I think that never.
So, so we should keep it?
Pretty real number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Excuse me, I'm so sorry.
Okay, next.
The lifeguards are actually gonna be over this year.
Really? You've done more than, yeah?
Yeah, so at the, when I close September, it'll be in negative two two six two.
Oh, well, that's a bad bid.
Wow, how could that be?
Two two six two this year.
How could that be? The hours are the hours, plus we didn't cover that end of the year. Too many lifeguards on duty at once.
No.
I think we had to, we had to like do something with covering them so that they can take lunch breaks. Cause it could just be there for eight hours. So. She had to adjust the schedule so that we. Stating compliance with labor laws.
All right, so next you have to look at the hours of coverage.
Cause we also put lifeguards on duty after Labor Day for the weekend.
Oh, well, cause we, we were short lifeguards before Labor Day.
Yeah, I know, that, that's why.
Oh, but you didn't have a couple lifeguards that we kept one of the beaches open for.
I don't know. I feel like we did.
I thought so, too.
We have some.
Yeah, but even if we did.
Mostly every day life.
Paying northern ones that left early.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I have to hold the detail for Judy.
Yeah.
So should you be taking like forty-four thousand up to like thirty-seven thousand?
Or forty-six anyway.
Yeah.
I think she usually has some money left over in other accounts of her, so she then.
I say leave it.
Pills it in.
Yeah, be careful.
So.
I say leave it.
Yes.
Or we should add it forty-seven, wherever she's pulling the money from.
Which looks like, um, uh, rec youth programs. Very.
Yes.
They have very big dollars.
From there, I think sometimes adult programs she pulls from.
Yeah.
But usually it's all related to the revenues also.
Yeah.
Okay, next town board other items. Historical society contract.
Wait, wait, the youth center?
Youth center.
Skip youth.
I skipped youth center, I'm sorry.
Because we've got the adjustment for Bethany.
Right?
So is that the same adjustment? Forty-one two hundred.
Forty Baba?
Forty-one thousand two hundred.
So that's. Two thousand four. Can't be, that's.
Yeah, let's go back up to Bethany's. I mean.
Yeah.
Kelly.
She works forty hours.
Oh, forty hours.
Oh, it's the hours, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're back to town board other items. I didn't have anything else.
Okay, historical society, fifteen thousand.
Yep. For me, I'm saying no.
Yes, and actually, Amber and I met with the woman who replaced Lorraine, I can't remember Lorraine's last name, from the New York State Archives.
Yeah.
We went to her class in Association of Towns last year. And she came out and did a walk around with town hall, you know, through town hall, all the storage that we have here, the room of her PD. And then we mentioned that we had had the meeting with Historical Society, what they have as far as archives go, and. I get my notes here. A couple of the interesting takeaways was what we can dispose of and what we can't dispose of. Anything that's, any records that we have that are before nineteen-ten, we have to get permission from New York State in order to get rid of any of those paper copies. We definitely wanna digitize everything, but anything older than that, we have to get permission, but then those things might be of value at the Historical Society.
Yes.
Some of the other things, how we store things versus how the Historical Society stores them, way better conditions down at the Historical Society.
Climate control, paper that doesn't have acids.
So we could ask the Historical Society to maintain them, but they would still remain town property.
Oh.
So that if we, you know, like if we ever wanted to take them back or Historical Society was shutting down or something for some reason, we'd have, we'd have to, you know, get those returned to us.
Right.
But she did think that there was some merit in having some of those older historical documents housed down there.
Yeah.
And so there is value to having partnership, so we really should formalize a contract with them, especially with respect to, to retaining ownership of certain documents and things like that.
I definitely concur on that, I just think that.
Can you email Kylie or just make sure that this contract idea, yeah?
There were some, the, the meeting was very good, Amber's gonna be getting a report from Maria McMench, McMench, McCashen, on, you know, her recommendations after the walkthrough.
Right.
But then we can. It worked with the historical.
So fifteen thousand, and maybe in future years, if the workload increases as Amber gets her arms around this project.
Yeah.
Then it might even be a little.
The lesson to be learned here is we have to take charge a little bit more and be a little bit more on the initiative, you know?
Usually.
Rather, rather than saying, what, what can you do for us?
Yeah.
You know?
This is what we need done.
This is what we need done, correct.
I have a meeting to sit down with them Thursday, the twelfth.
Yeah.
Oh, good, you respond to that?
Yeah, to further, see what we can.
Great.
Junction with. Four fifteen thousand dollars.
And a lot of that, I mean, not a lot of that, but some of that, cause we're governmental and we're paying for a service, but let's just say, I know. Yeah, we should be able to get a grant next, next year, or, you know, towards the end of the year, if you're really gonna use them, Amber. You know, start offloading documents and they need us to help cover the archivist.
Oh, absolutely.
You know what I mean, we can, um, you know, again, the whole grant thing, you know, um, it's, you gotta think months, not a year in advance, but.
I'm like, you know.
That being said. Okay, great.
All right, so that's going back in.
Uh, next, community housing board, we discussed that already.
Yep.
Next is landfill.
Okay, so.
I wasn't here for this one.
We didn't change anything in community housing board, right?
No.
Yeah. Because community housing board is gonna be offset, right?
Well, we don't know that.
Transfer tax.
It's gonna be offset, then we take it out of here, or we show it in revenue.
Yeah, if I just, just take.
Twenty thousand five hundred.
Mm-hmm. Which. Cause if some of this is not specific project related, or if we have to hold public. Spend it, you know, of the ten percent, you know, that means we have to bring in two hundred five thousand, which I guess we're up to. To help you, how much?
Uh, like one seventy.
It's doable.
Landfill?
Okay, um, I have a note, but. Nothing else, it says personnel services minus one person?
Yes, they moved Wesley Congdon from land.
Russian weeds.
Russian weed, from Russian weed or?
From Russian weeds to here. So it should be plus one person, not minus one person since the dollar amount's coming up. And then the other note that I had was down in, this is not a good one.
Three wells.
We'll be sure.
Yeah.
Wells?
The wells. So, yeah, you weren't here for this, Jerry, but.
We have to do test wells.
We have a new mandate.
Three test wells on the south end of the recycling site.
So I estimate something between eight and ten thousand dollars.
Each?
Each, for each of the three wells, we need to up that by, I wrote down twenty, we changed it from thirty-five hundred to twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, which line item was that?
This line. Eighty-one sixty point four three two.
Oh, yeah, Tesla. We were gonna make that, what, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty, twenty-eight plus thirty-five, oh.
An offset to that possibly, but we'd have to look at the revenue side, is the solid waste carding fees, MSW, you know, solid waste. Right now, we're tracking to a hundred and ten thousand versus a hundred and thirty-one thousand. If we make the correction here, we also think.
What are we trending towards?
One hundred nine thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars exact, that's nine thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars times twelve months.
But he said he wanted to hold off because that contract renewed.
Doesn't. Oh, right, yeah.
Higher rate.
Yeah, so I highlight that for, to revisit. Yeah, because he was gonna request that contract.
Mm-hmm.
No, wait, I, I totaled this up forever, whatever it's worth, the columns up above, you know, from eighty-one sixty, one hundred, to, you know, personal services down to deferred comp. You take a look at what we spent in the first eight months, we spent.
We're in negotiations, Angie.
Oh, alright, okay, yeah, because we're, we've only spent fifty-two percent
Right.
in the first eight months, and we have forty-seven point seven five percent. Alright, so I'm just, just looking at that. How could that be right anyway, Shell?
Where are you?
And the very first one, personal services, that we're.
It's, it's the negotiation, no?
No, it just seems like there's just so much.
I counted it for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be two hundred.
I'm wondering if this, going back to what we were talking about this morning.
Sorry?
P meeting.
Alright.
Yeah, except the answer to this morning's conversation was different than I thought. Because what's getting reported. Like, gets, gets broken down by category here, as like you and Judy are posting it based upon, you know, how it's budgeted.
So.
We're talking about when hours, like with people who do a third landfill, a third of Russian weeds and a third of roads.
So for our budget purposes, we budget them for being a third, a third, a third. But they're having them keep track of their hours, so say they do seventy percent, yeah. Right, so then when that payroll gets handed into Judy, that bigger chunk is what she's then posting. Can you understand what I'm saying? You want me to break it down more?
No, no, I thought she was, I thought if somebody was like three different categories, but they spent the entire two weeks in Russian weeds.
I thought. All of the money's getting pulled from Russian weeds then.
I thought, okay, I thought the way Judy answered, I thought she was saying that it got divided a third, a third, a third.
No, that's what we're saying, budgetary, you know.
Okay, alright.
Budget-wise, that is what we're doing.
Misunderstood.
But if she's pulling all that person, because that's the payroll she's being handed then.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, I try to understand.
Then that's when our numbers are kinda, yeah.
And the personal services, the top line up there, you also added one personnel in there, right?
Yeah.
Next, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna go.
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, the only thing I was bringing up about that, yeah, is that you spent less than two hundred thousand in three months.
Kind of like currently reflecting reality.
No.
Oh, in, in purity.
Yeah.
Oh, and the payroll.
Yeah, the last, yeah, the last, that should be a hundred thousand.
Definitely, so, yeah.
Uh, in the last, and then you're.
Oh, I know why, it's, well, now.
Now you're missing one.
Because the.
That's what I was gonna say, so when Wesley's working in landfill, he's still getting paid from Russian weeds.
Oh, right.
It's right now, this year.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
High.
It's, yeah, so that's only part of it, but it's not enough.
Yeah. Yeah.
A hundred thousand, that would get you to three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And as the one salary, it's sixty-five, three sixty-five.
Hazmat?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because hazmat would be.
Why, four sixty?
So I.
Why is it so high?
This might be more Debbie and Judy, why?
With the projections, that has, that's the current contract.
Yeah, we might like, like maybe next week.
We can front some time too.
If you had three percent, you're not, yeah.
Convising.
Oh, whatever percent, yeah, doesn't come off to that amount, amount of money.
And now hopefully next year it'll be fixed. It's just, you know, he works an eight-hour day and it's just a third, a third, a third.
Yeah.
No matter where he is, that's just.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And then Kenny is gonna figure out a way to determine for budget period and, and proper allocations. Which to some extent, are, do we have so many categories, do we need to, like, do we care if it's Russian weeds or it's?
Right.
Uh, the other categories of solid.
So I mean, sometimes it's nice to see where the time is actually being spent, you know, if we're spending much more labor time in Russian weeds than anything else.
If we need to adjust. Yeah, but in Kenny will be tracking that in the scheduling.
Right.
Because he'll know where he's assigned people.
So can I look into that?
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
I just asked somebody to check their personal, their top line, because the numbers don't add up.
Yeah, yeah, it's all good at the top. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're, we're gonna pick that apart, because.
Yeah, it just doesn't add up.
We think the way it's being reported.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, and then the hazmat, in reviewing the contract, reminded that hazmat gets paid out at time of half because it's hazardous materials.
Mm-hmm.
And that one, we are gonna have to make sure that that gets tracked properly, shall be during the time of attendance. But when we do the budget, hazmat's one percent, or five percent? That five percent should be five percent times one and a half group of times, and I don't think we've ever done that. So has it been a problem? To those many five percent of time on it.
Right, that's hazmat, yeah.
But if we're budgeting it, then we haven't been budgeting it.
Correctly.
But that will be one time in attendance, so we've gotta make sure of that.
That's right, you guys all know that one, Shell? Anything else here?
Wait, on the next page. Twenty-two.
Yeah.
Eighty-one sixty four five one, the hauling C and D.
Yeah.
No, you want to note on that too?
No, environmental testing. On a drink, you want above it, sorry.
Yeah.
That's gonna go up to thirty-eight thousand. Just the testing itself, once I get the wells in.
Yeah.
So twenty-two five becomes thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I had a note on hauling C and D. I had one forty-three.
I did too, because revenues will be covered. Because you're on, you're on track right now at ninety-five and a half thousand dollars for the first eight months. If you take half of that number, it's forty-seven, forty-eight thousand, say forty-eight thousand, you add that to the existing, and you're up to a hundred and forty-three thousand, not one thirty.
You're still going in the wrong direction, guys.
So we're adding thirteen thousand now?
Hold on my notes.
What are we showing on?
We had income budgeted for two thirty, and I would have a note to up that to two forty, so we're not covering.
Yes, we are.
It's not a hundred.
This is C and D?
Yes, C and D, so we're adding thirteen thousand dollars to the expense side, but we're only adding ten thousand to the revenue side.
Wait, what are you showing as the revenue?
Two hundred and forty thousand.
We're only showing a hundred and forty-three thousand as the whole, as the appropriation. You're making sixty thousand.
Mm-hmm. No, there's gotta be more in there, is what you're saying. Demo concrete out, is that covered by C and D?
No, no, it's right on the expense side.
Yeah, maybe.
I think so. Yeah, I think, I think the revenue covers a number of different lines.
Oh.
Right.
What page is the revenue in?
Revenue is on page twenty-six. And it's the first line, so landfill revenues, twenty-one thirty dash eight. Last year's budget book, I can add better notation of what went into the revenue.
I also had our cardboard revenue and our tire revenue dropping.
Yeah, because it was projected, cardboard was projected at twenty thousand, we've only taken in actually four thousand, zero, zero, four thousand. It was projected to go to six thousand, we, we budgeted ten.
Well, we got a ton of cardboard sitting there, we haven't moved it in a year, I don't think. Yeah, we haven't brought it this year.
Looking for a better price?
Okay, is that what he's doing?
I'm gonna wanna go back to.
Yeah, so back to the sales shares.
That's important fact.
Amber, I think hauling C and D is just the, just that, I don't think the furniture, C and D is anything else. Shell, am I missing anything there?
No.
Revenue, twenty-one thirty-eight?
Can you go over what your changes were again, in the expense side?
Four, three, two, test wells repairs, thirty-one thousand, five hundred is the new number, because we have.
Oh, twenty-eight thousand.
Oh, it's up twenty-eight, so total thirty.
No, not, no, not twenty-one.
No?
Taking it to twenty-eight.
Oh, okay, great, thanks.
Oh, twenty-eight, I had thirty-eight.
I had thirty-one.
Ooh, it's a bag.
So twenty-four thousand.
No, no. Thirty-eight is a different line, I, environment.
This is plus, yeah, twenty-four, fifty, five hundred.
Yes.
Yeah, so increase is twenty-four, five from Jerry's, and then.
Yeah, that's just four, four, four? Yes, that goes to thirty-eight thousand.
Go to thirty-eight thousand.
So that's an increase.
Fifteen, five. So trouble for the.
That cat, that, this section, fifty-three thousand.
But wait, but wait, there's more.
Wait, now I'm confused, what was the first number we were talking about, not the environmental testing and monetary?
Four, three, two, test well repairs, because we have to add test wells.
Point four, three, yeah, point four, three, two.
Point four, three, two, sorry.
And now it's a twenty-eight.
Yes.
Okay, I got that.
And then at the end, but I thought also.
You said hauling C and D was going on?
Five, one was gonna go to one forty-three.
Right, I, so I had a note, and it said one forty-three with a question mark.
Yeah.
It's for hauling C and D.
Because.
Well, that's part of the fifty-three thousand.
That's where we'd be.
Yes, when you say the point four, five, one is one, my brain just like melted a little bit. I was like, I'm almost there, you almost.
Late in the day.
I'm like, we use words and then numbers, not numbers and more numbers?
It's too late in the day for a repetition. In the category, you could assume.
I mean, it's hard digits. You've got this.
Alright. And we have to keep our plovers, I think.
Yeah, because there's gonna be more dredging in twenty-twenty.
Right, it's nothing to do on Taylor's Island, they're just.
We were gonna ask about the shed.
This is the note, it's the plover, I think.
Oh, you have the shed?
Five hundred.
Since there's dredging, they're gonna.
Oh, okay, so we're not gonna mess with that.
We just did some side, going through the archives, and back there, I found a, a box labeled, I, I don't know what's in it.
No. AT and T?
The dividends.
It did, it did say Taylor's Island dividends, so I'm hopeful that it was also town attorney old boxes.
Wow.
So maybe the Lori Dowd suffered transition, like maybe it's there.
Right, yeah.
No one's found it, but I was like all excited, I.
Oh, well, maybe I'll come in.
Three years later, two years later.
Oh, no, it's been like that, you know, yeah.
You know, the other part?
The Taylor's Island dividends, at one point Lori Dowd got it changed over from the Helen, whoever's name was?
Yeah.
I can't think, the.
Boddington?
No, no, um. Totally, anyways, um, we got the dividend money switched over to the town's name, and then at some point after Lori Dowd left and Bob came on, something with the stock transfer company got it switched back to the foundation, the Gregory S. Taylor name.
And then Helen Rosenblue somehow.
She had some piece to do with it, I think, when Lori.
Weren't their checks coming in her name?
Well, they kept, they went to her address, her office address.
Oh, right.
So, but no one can find how we got things transferred over, and when I, like made a couple of calls over the years, like I almost had it put down for the COVID, and then COVID hit, and then nobody was in the offices anymore.
Yeah.
The banks, or, but there may be something, so.
You know, the other one we gotta try to find out, when you guys go to the Association of Towns, I wish we get to do it.
Go with the town.
With the state controllers, there's like three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in escrow for the Bridge Street purchase, that, when we bought the, when we.
Oh, right.
Volunteer park?
Yeah, you know, we bought that and the people never claimed the money.
Right.
So it's sitting in escrow with the, with the state.
There you go.
Whoa, unclaimed funds?
Yeah, yeah.
It's just got the statute of limitations.
So hello, almost two points off this.
Oh, I don't, I don't think there is a statute, I don't, we're not entitled, our heirs are entitled to it.
Yeah.
But if there's no heirs, maybe we can get it back, so certainly something to look into. Okay.
Alright.
Next year, that would still last.
So Taylor's Island, I thought the one question was, why do they need two thousand for the shed? Yeah.
Right, I'll find out too, second.
So just to be clear, while we're taking up playing money, that East End Supervisors, that money that was.
That's gone.
That's gone, yeah. And where did that go to, by the way?
Uh, I'll find out, I do, they, they finally settled it, I'm not sure what they were gonna do with it.
Because that was going to the Alphalos or something, that they.
Yeah, I think ultimately it was just they realized that that was not in the law of use.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, do we need to do a budget worksheet?
Um, no, but wait, I just wanna go back to, oh, A benefits worksheet.
Changes.
Shelby, mine, least retirement is in purple.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what purple means.
Me neither. It's pretty.
I think that was Barbara had me to change, but that number in there is what it was changed to. Four ninety-five nine nine, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I have notes next to workers' comp and unemployment insurance, Barbara, are those, those right numbers?
We needed that to be firmed up.
Those are state retirement system, that's the end of the year?
We can ask her, but I don't, I think they're.
Why is there so much money left there?
Yeah, I think they settle up, I, I don't even know if it's the end of the year or into the following year.
It might be into the following, they're probably waiting for market returns, is what my guess is, there's gotta be some, right?
People we're talking about?
You stay retirements, what are.
Why is there such a big?
Oh, no, it's the way it gets paid out, it's like.
Oh, that's paid out.
Yeah, that's, I'm just thinking about this for a second.
Supposed to be each quarter, but they always behind a quarter, I think.
For state retirement system?
Yeah.
No, we get one bill a year, and so we get the bill in December, and if we prepay it, we get a little bit of a discount, and then we do a year-end journal entry that captures three quarters of it in the current year, and then one quarter of it.
Right, that's what I meant, yeah, yeah.
Gets posted into the next year, because it's, it covers through March thirty-first.
Right.
And those numbers would hold up?
Yeah.
Yes, because we have our.
Quarter times six quarters, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we have the actual bill, so it's, yeah, that's a real number.
Yeah.
I don't know why, like, we might be sleeping off from one of those numbers, it could be just because of personnel changes. And so we think it's a good number, but then the calculation is.
Okay, capital projects?
That would be, that's the flow-through from the H tab.
Mm-hmm.
So, over there. The one eighty-five is currently. The ADA compliance for. Let me just think.
Justice.
That would be for justice court. I just have like swapped them. Okay, and then the power of the structure for 30,000. EMS radios for 5,000, police radios 40,000. Initial work on the air burner for landfill, 60,000 for somebody's master plan. And then 15,000 to put into capital reserve, just towards next year.
How much you put in capital reserve?
15,000. So, I mean.
Yep.
That one is just going into a reserve, so we could just take it out.
Well, this is where I'm gonna make my offer.
ARPA. Okay, ARPA. Well, that would actually, that wouldn't be good for ARPA.
No, no, everything else though.
No, 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 it was a time. Yeah.
Everything else, yeah. And maybe, right, if depending on the addition here. I'm looking for what I'm thinking about.
There we could increase some of it, yeah.
Taser. Taser.
Yeah, instead of doing it all for five years. Well, we'll see. We'll, we'll make that, we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
Change this, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Back to A.
Okay, capital projects. All right, so now into revenues. Actor Receiver, I had a question. We were gonna ask Ann Marie if she's comfortable with that, that island payment.
I had it went to 53.
The LIPA, that one is.
That's a calculation, that's.
Yeah, 2% on what we got this year.
53.
52, 301.
2, 302. All right, so we add, put that in. So plus.
52, 302. Wow. So, look at the tax penalties this year. I guess, you know, we shouldn't be over.
I wouldn't, yeah.
Also, I mean.
It's the notification thing?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought the notifications went out. It was more email and so they might have gotten missed and so people will now never look for them.
And once you pay that penalty, you're pretty much not gonna do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's why I thought it was just a one-time clip.
And she's gonna go back to a second mailing, but only for people who did not be burst out. I think she used to do it, everybody got the second.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It did have, I mean, it's talking peanuts, but the sales tax under collection credit, I feel like quarterly.
Yeah, we just played catch. You guys just said a bunch of resolutions, so.
I was gonna say, it should be a higher amount, so. It could be $500, maybe a little more.
Yeah, I was gonna say like 1,000.
And the franchise fees.
No, it'd be mostly 800, it must 800.
This one?
Next 200 a quarter.
I can look at what I just translated.
Yeah, it's capped at 200 a quarter, but we don't hit the 200, I don't think. So 700? We can give Shelby a minute, because we did just, do you just trend up like three quarters or?
Oy, so that mortgage tax shortfall this year is really gonna affect the fund balance.
Yes, except we've taken in 220. In August, if it was trending, I pro.
What if that's fourth quarter?
Oh.
Wasn't ever burst out.
It's not my fault. It was like we could add.
This is what the controller said.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's accounting for 1.6% of our.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's the lack of.
Okay, so wetlands permits, when we talked about increased fees, is that gonna affect that at all?
Uh, I know you.
Uh, A 2590F.
590, oh, I see. So on sales tax, it's 424 as you're through. That's your moratorium.
Yeah.
Well, the question then is how many wetlands permits did we do?
So we're gonna put sales tax expective.
500?
Mm-hmm. Moratorium had some impact, right?
Moratorium has an impact on what?
I didn't know it would impact our wetland.
Wetlands and special permits.
Oh, I know, but, no, but if, so if you were an 8,000 square foot house and you didn't apply for this year because of the moratorium. But your waterfront, wouldn't you have had to apply for wetlands? So because you didn't do any of it, you didn't do.
Only if they were in the wetlands.
That's what I'm saying. Oh, oh, not just, not just, like, let me just use Carlino House.
They were in the wetlands.
They would have need, did a permit, and, and not because of the frontage, but because of the baggage. Okay.
Why didn't you drag 3,000 in the house? That's 2,000 for the first eight months. You're trending to right to 3,000. Get one with that.
Let me see, where are you?
On wetland permits.
Well, it's gonna be trend. Oh, yeah.
You are trending, I mean, eight months, 2,000, 12 months, 3,000.
Opened up to 3,000? That's even if we don't increase the rate.
Insurance reimbursement.
So we're up 1,500. Oh, no, yeah, yeah.
Sales tax.
Oh, sales tax. Where did that go to?
500, okay. It's peanuts, though.
It's, yeah. Definitely on the ground, traveling.
Okay, town card revenues.
The only thing that I had was on dredging documents, 8,000.
Is this an odd year? Cause I don't really remember that many dredging projects.
Yeah, actually. I know, because now that I think about it, it's the Royer one.
We had two, but I, again, I don't remember that many.
There was only the yacht club and Royer.
And there was the one by South Ferry.
Yes, yeah.
Mabel's Creek.
Mabel's Creek.
Mabel's Creek, yeah.
But I thought it was annual? Those are just periodically.
No, those are periodic.
Yeah, because Royer doesn't do it every year. Royer doesn't do it every year. Mabel's Creek does it more frequently.
It does, but I'm not sure whether to do it that.
Shouldn't we increase the dock permit fees and all that?
Mm-hmm.
Think we can get that done.
So then 8,000 might be okay?
Yeah, yeah.
8,000?
From 4,000?
Yeah. The dock.
On the dock fees?
It's gonna be more, but let's, yeah.
Dredging dock permits, that one?
Yeah.
Where you wanna take it to?
Eight.
Eight?
Some of the numbers that we looked at.
Oh, I know, we're.
Very encouraging, very encouraging.
Um, let's see.
Christina, what is next steps on docks fees? Do you know?
Oh, Tuesday, it's again on agenda to debate all three fees, yes. Ian's will come, you can review whatever we have.
Okay.
Settle and then by the end of the.
Thank you.
Having Ian come in to talk about 24 months.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
As we slide them down during these.
Yes. Okay.
And then it shall be. Film permits made more money this year.
Who, what?
Film permits.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't think, maybe we didn't collect, maybe it's not registered here. It definitely did.
Yeah, I mean, they were recent, so I don't think they've actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they were, yeah, a lot.
Yeah, this moring fees, I think they adopted and modified it wrong. I thought we said it wasn't that much, because we based it originally on previous. They only did one year. Remember the new.
No, it's being prorated, so you're not getting that full amount.
Okay.
So it's, you know, set for a certain amount of year, but we're prorating until March 31st of 2024. So some people are only paying 80, $90.
Okay.
And then going forward, it would be the full amount.
Got you.
Shelby, could you, somebody remind me of parking fees. What we charge for daily?
Yeah.
Weekly and seasonally. I don't know if it's monthly, but. Daily parking fee is.
No, I, I would refer to Amber on that. I don't.
All right.
I told.
Amber, daily parking fees.
Yes.
What do we charge?
$25.
Okay, and what do we charge per week?
70.
70 for the week?
70 for the week, $125 for the month, 250 for the season.
Looks like we're not gonna make that this year, our revenues for parking.
No, in my budget book last year, how we got the 111, 424 was two.
You know, I was, I was looking at that.
My little notes says.
Fact that what the girls just said, the ladies just said, you know, that we're at a little under 89,000. We projected 95,000. And so we are 6,000 under. How many we're gonna sell in the last four months? He answers probably not a, not a lot of any.
Not required, right?
Yeah, not required. So what I, what I'm saying for the, the daily of 25, I guess, and I think that should not be changed. The weekly of, from 70, I would bet 100.
Jamie.
Why wouldn't, it's just a global number of 95. We were over this year, so maybe we only can, maybe next year we only budget 92. What, I'm missing something?
This is revenue.
Revenue, I'm in revenue.
So I'm talking about, I'm talking about meeting, 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 meeting that 95.
I know.
I'm talking. Great, and more people come next year.
In all likelihood, that's the truth. More people will come next year. I just think, you know, the word is out and gets out more and more each year, but.
We also lost some income from Crescent Beach daily permits because the police department took it off because it was such an influx. There is no parking spots for people who were here for residents or the.
That's true.
Renters that would come. They, you know, they get a weekly or a monthly permit. So with that daily permit at Crescent Beach, there was, there were no spots, so the police department decided to take that option away. So we did lose a lot of income from that.
Oh, so, so if you wanted to go to Crescent Beach and you did the little, you know, QR code, what, what happened to you? You were told.
There is no option. The Crescent Beach was taking off, so you only had the choices from Wade's and all of the others.
Okay, so, all right. Yeah.
Yeah. It was for a few weeks.
Yeah.
And then it just.
Then there were no spots, so, because everyone went there.
There's, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, everyone wanted to go to Crescent Beach.
Yeah.
You're getting lots of phone calls, like, why isn't Crescent an option on pavement anymore? That's where everyone wants to go and then.
It's filled up.
Those of us that live here.
Just throwing this out for whatever it's worth, in order to meet these goals and maybe surpass the goals for next year. Daily of $25 a day, I'm good with. I would like to see the weekly go from 70 to 100. I'd like the monthly to go from 125 to 150. I'd like the seasonal go from 250 to $350 increase.
I get you now.
Let's put, let's.
Give me those numbers again?
Uh, daily at 25 stays the same. I think that's fair. Weekly, $70 goes to $100. Monthly, 125 goes to 150. And seasonal goes from 250 to 300. That's, that's three months. You're getting June, July, and August, and then some for seasonal.
I disagree with him on the weekly.
Me too. So I think you and I probably have the same opinion.
So what, what did you wanna go with?
Well, at least 125.
Oh.
Let's do this. Let's do some projections for Tuesday.
Do we go, I mean. It would be.
175.
On Wednesday.
Paying the daily rate?
Mm-hmm.
So you get a discount off the day, you know, because you buy it a week.
Let's do some projections for Wednesday's worksheet.
Yeah.
Okay.
What would you say on the weekly?
150.
150, what would you say?
I'm not sure, because I was trying to figure out like how many days.
25 daily, six days is, is 150. I don't, I don't know if that's right. I mean.
I see where you're from, 150.
You know, yeah, I mean, going all six or seven days, it ranks one day, one day, and a month.
I just suggested.
So if you wanna go to 125, I'd say 100, but if you wanna go to 125.
I do.
Okay, 125.
What'd you say for the next?
That's five days.
And what'd you say for monthly?
Of seven.
Did you say?
So when they used to.
Monthly is 125 and you, now, yeah, I would bump that up to probably 175.
Daily. 10. You know?
I, I'd say 100 a week.
Yeah. Or is it like unlimited now, daily passes?
I will have this discussion Tuesday, but we can just get some, Amber, if you can give us some numbers of how many we saw of each, maybe for the last two years.
Right.
I have it all written down from 2024 to present, but I'll, I'll give it to you.
And what the rates are?
Everywhere else is a lot more expensive.
Yeah, I, I.
That's what I'm saying.
South, South Shore is a lot more expensive.
I think Montauk was like $300, just for, or $400. I forget the timeframe, but it was, it's a lot more than us.
You're renting at the prices that are being rented here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's like, I remember this 500 and something for.
We lose.
Ask people and say, I'll walk.
Only because.
Drop me off and one member will come back, you know.
Once you do this, this is revenues for, for people paying on the outside, not, not for people.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's our point, trying to help the taxpayer.
And, and, and the fact of it is, we, we did a lot with the, and, and we do lose a certain percentage, whatever that small percent, what was it, 8% or 10% when you go online to do it? You know, so we don't get the whole 100% of it. Remember, they, the company that does this for us makes, takes some money out of that, so. And we'll lose a little bit of that, but we're given the flexibility of being able to go online and be able to do this. If these numbers, you know, produce another 10, 20, maybe 30, maybe more, $30,000 every year. Maintaining beaches, bathrooms, you know, and everything else that we gotta maintain, and, and the maintenance.
Okay. Okay, so.
Boat storage fees, we bought on 16,975. Can we take that up to 17,000 next year?
Where are you? Oh, there you are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Page 25, line 82050, oh, 2050.
We're taking up to 18,000.
Well. We maxed out on.
No, they're, they're building more as they're.
I think 18 is reasonable.
Yeah.
So Amber, can you add that to your list? Just, how, how many boat storage fees and what are we charging? I forget. 25? I don't know. No?
Five, yeah.
It's 50, 75, and 100. Small, medium.
Yeah, you'll get, you'll get more kickback on this one than you will on the parking fees, I guarantee you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think, there's no doubt about that, you know, I've, I've heard enough.
No, we're not raising. No, we're not raising the rate. We're just anticipating more revenue.
I, I agree with that, putting more, more amount there. Well, rate will enhance that, plus the fact we've already gone over that this year. So I would, I would say go to 18 or 20, especially if we're gonna put more amount there.
Yeah, I'd say 18.
Okay, 18 is good, all right. That's a good 100 dollar increase. I wouldn't mess with the rates at all.
No.
Okay, EMS revenues, we don't anticipate, because those are donations. Court, that's basically what the judges.
Two or 300 calls on those at the donations?
No, no, no. The foundation gets the donations.
That's what I'm saying.
Then, then the foundation gives us a check.
Oh, okay.
So then we don't know what they're gonna give us, so we anticipate any.
Oh, it's just once a year? Yeah.
Yeah, usually.
Yeah.
So I'm like, you know, if I go, I would make a little donation.
But like, they'll give us, like, we'll put in, like, we're getting a donation of $500,000 and then we're expending $500,000 on an ambulance.
Right, right.
So it's, there's an offset.
Yeah.
Do we know what those donations average per year? How we trend? We could find out.
Like he said, I think you got one for 70,000.
Yeah.
Then what happens if they don't have anything specific to spend it on? It goes into the reserve fund.
Right.
And then just builds up in the reserve fund.
That's how they buy the ambulances, yeah.
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 That was happy, let's go a few bucks, honestly.
Couple hundred thousand.
I think they're like 300, then.
You have a million dollars almost.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's higher than that, when you, if you have to outfit them. Sometimes they can transfer equipment, but.
So Brian's in, in C and D, in furniture, and furniture in. Brian's projecting 230. So that's a hell of a, more than the appropriations.
Yeah, that's why I thought there was like more than.
Yeah, so that's where we have to, just put a little question mark there.
But I'd like to take that to 240.
Well, we're projecting 240 right now, based on this year.
Okay, 240?
240.
240.
Right on target for that.
But I feel like that's where he might have said something to the effect, I don't know if it was when he came before, so a conversation I had with him a different day. That we, like, we're tracking higher expenditures, so we added just now 13,000 to the expenditure side of the budget, but we're only getting 10,000. But he said we also create our own C and D, which has to get tracked off.
Yeah, right. Okay, how about sale B X, how's that trend?
We're right on track.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
He said 240, right? I was looking at something else, okay.
Tire disposal with Ty.
Yeah, tire disposal, he said. Let me check this out, he said, right?
Yeah, I know, 2,000 is kind of where we thought maybe we'd end up. Or that was my note. To 2,000.
Yeah, stop. That and.
Take it down from three to two?
Question.
I thought there was a bunch of tires that they, or something.
Right, and that's why.
That's why.
The six oh four.
He needed to look at that. The six oh four, well, based on what we have hanging around, I think.
The six oh four was low, but he said that they, I had, you've been reminded, kind of the ones that he's to follow up on, okay, good, I just didn't know how it goes.
You're just not getting that many of them?
Yeah. Or they're not getting the same money for them.
Well, it's the same with cardboard. He's, I don't, I think he's just been sitting on it.
Well, it was a combo. He said with cardboard, they've only done one shipment of cardboard, but they're also not getting as much in. So they're not taking in as much cardboard as they have in the past years. So either people are not ordering as much online, or.
Demos.
Or, or.
Was a bit.
Environmental.
Whoever's just taking it in the truck.
Probably artists are taking it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what it was.
So, yeah, so.
So they aren't.
But I mean, he's got to trail all of that, and that could go.
Yeah.
The one thing you could do is an educational article to the public. Because, uh, we do, we look at this as revenue sources, whether it's tires of, or cardboard, things like that. If you have a mess of that stuff, and you've just had a, you know, big delivery of cardboard, rather than put it in your garbage and pay to have it taken away, bring it up to the recycling center, because it's money in the bank. So you're putting money into the, you're not paying for that now to cart it away. You're actually enhancing the revenue for the town. So maybe people don't quite get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think they do.
And.
According to recycling dot com, it's fluctuated between twenty and two-hundred and ten a ton over the last five months.
Wow, that's huge, yeah.
He's a fluctuation. I mean, he, he says it changed.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-three, it was the twenty to twenty-six.
He's not making as much money on it, and he's, he's not getting as much cardboard in.
Wow. So are we taking revenues down to ten thousand as Brian?
That was the note I had.
Yeah, me too.
I have taken down to ten also. But again, I, you know, ten thousand dollars is a lot of money. I think the average public doesn't understand how that hurts it down. So it's not a big deal from cardboard in the back of your car coming to the recycling center dropping it off.
Once the market's that bad, it's better of letting the car to take it. But it's costing us money to get rid of it. I don't know, we'll do.
Yeah, you're, you're just not making money on it at all, yeah.
I also think we'll have to tighten up.
Just looking at it as a revenue, yeah.
No, I, normally I am, but in other words, if, if we're not making money getting rid of it, what's the point?
Going to the store, yeah.
Right, if the market's so low.
And then inflation happened.
And they're not doing any.
Talking, there's no need to bring it up there than we're getting for it.
Like the perfect story of bad economic data. Okay.
Okay. Oh, so I didn't have any other.
So you're marking that down to ten thousand?
Yeah.
Uh, there's just this other one, um, we didn't ask specifically about, but the concrete is lagging, and so are iron sales. Quite a lot.
I think that was another one where the price.
Yeah.
Dropped. So.
Well, the crushed concrete.
Sale of crushed concrete?
I think part of that has to do with the fact. But the way we do it was, we would, we would take, we had a guy up the island. We would take him mulch, and he would give us crushed concrete. He doesn't want the mulch anymore. We're not going as often for the crushed concrete to sell, and it's a one-way trip.
Yeah.
It's not as cost-effective for us. So that might be the reason. I don't, I don't know. I'd have to ask Brian.
Is, you know, so I'm going to mark this, we've got to ask Brian, because we're over budgeted.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Under budget, I guess, in this, because it's.
Yeah.
But we're trending to twenty-six thousand six hundred.
Really?
Under, under which one?
Seventeen, because, yeah, like the second.
Crushed one thousand.
Yeah, crushed one.
Oh, okay. That's not terrible.
No. No, sometimes you have to, like, do the math, because it just isn't too.
Yeah, right. And then the one down below, a little bit, iron, iron. Oh, you've already reduced it. You reduced it to Brian's number, I see. I wasn't seeing that it was thirty-eight down to thirty.
Yeah, I mean, we're tracking, you know, and I don't know what the seasonality is of this stuff, twenty-two thousand six hundred.
Yeah. Right.
Sort of depends on demos.
Yeah.
So between the two.
Yeah, okay. All right, never mind.
Okay. Second page.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, babe. Girl, eat more sugar.
Make you young one.
Okay, so we're projecting an increase in topsoil.
I'm sorry.
Same in fridge. Old patch, a slight increase. Minimum charge, a slight increase. Key gravel, the same. Paper, the same. Ground chips, the same.
Paper and mixed paper sales, we haven't had any revenues.
No, we haven't. You said that's been very low.
So.
I think paper and cardboard are both, uh, yeah.
He has one batch, I think, to send.
Yeah.
Okay.
Five thousand, a reasonable number, should we?
Because he hasn't, he obviously hasn't sent anything yet.
Yeah, I mean, he goes through this budget, and I don't think.
Yeah, no, he's pretty good. He's always been good with the, yeah.
He doesn't, he doesn't flake these things, really.
Yeah.
Somehow.
About commercial leave.
Well, it looks low, but now, we just get into the season.
We're just getting.
Oh, right, and you mentioned that. No, you're right, yeah.
Tis the season.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, that's at that. Medical severance center revenue, we just want to look into the electricity reimbursement.
So I've got those highlighted.
And a few, both of them.
Yeah.
Make sure, that should be, uh, first of all. Nutrition, I have a mess, a note to myself to ask Kelly, why she's, uh, making the nutrition and con, contribution issues down. That's just based on numbers or.
Yeah, I think that's, we're tracking to be up thirteen, up to thirteen thousand eight hundred.
Yeah.
From the ninety-two posted so far, so.
Yeah, I just want to ask her why it's down, yeah. The residential repair, it's kind of a wash. Senior center revenue. Little bit. Silver circle revenue. Up a tiny bit. Shopping assistance is a funded program. Police revenue. Okay, police revenue sharing, this is from the county. It's based on county sales tax. Next is police tow and store. Guess we haven't been doing much.
Yeah.
Police reports. Stop DW, I mean, these revenues aren't really there, other than the, uh, police revenue sharing, which is way up. The other ones are kind of. Sheldon, we have a history on any of these things. I mean, they're not huge numbers, but it doesn't seem like, uh.
Yeah, I think we get the. I know, last year we got the stopped up with DWI.
Right.
That might come more toward the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
It's like if the police do do a checkpoint over the summer, and then.
Which they did, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it probably.
I like the tow and store.
Haven't done much.
I kind of think, though, that Jim goes, I mean, we.
Where's the auction?
He's pretty reliable when it comes to these projections, and he, and he doesn't pad stuff, so.
But we have.
I don't think we did one this year.
No, but we have stuff in the impound, because we talk about having more, they're planning on an auction.
I thought he said it, it was so, so little that it wasn't worth police overtime to do it this year.
Really?
Because we have to do overtime, pay the overtime to do it.
Okay.
But we have to ask Stephen and Brian about the, uh, Cozy Lane property.
Well, that's, yeah, I thought that was.
That was going to be a separate auction.
A separate auction.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
I think so.
Okay, recreation revenue. Waterman donation, that's, that was a one-time thing. Adult fees are the same.
Actually, I think we set up a co-watering program, and it's successful. I think there's a possibility for future funding for.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Of the same source, you know, yeah, for, you know, other years. But we have to get a program off the ground first, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And recreation fees have already far surpassed what we, yes, budgeted forty-one, we're up to sixty-four in the first eight months. We're on target then to do, you know, nineties. And what that, probably doesn't, although, with recreation fees, it's not for the year, it is for a year long, but if you join August.
Yeah, when you join, right.
Right, so it, there's no reason why it shouldn't continually increase, so are we a little light there?
Yeah, I have a note to do seventy thousand.
Really?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, you have four months left. If you're even, even in modest numbers, you would make seventy thousand without, without too much.
Yeah, I have a note for seventy thousand.
Okay.
And then, I was just looking at the youth fees, and we've already made thirty-four. Three thirty-five, we could bring that up to thirty-five instead of thirty-three.
Yeah, the youth fees.
Maybe most of it happens in the summer, but still.
It does, but.
The programs, yeah. Let's still do the thirty-five.
Yeah, it's trending in the right direction.
So what, you say make thirty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say thirty-five, thirty-six, yeah. Let's go with thirty-five, be conservative.
Because with soccer taking off this year, it might be bigger next year.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I know one thing mentioned with the waterman program was, maybe take third grade every year. And get them over there to the Y in East Hampton for after-school pool classes, swim classes. That's one thing. But the other thing I was thinking of. Andy, you know, grew up as a summer kid here, and they had a marine biology program for, like, fifth graders or something, and it was taught, maybe taught by Roble? I don't know, anyway, like a fond memory of childhood, learned a lot, lifelong interest, he became a guy who worked, works on the water. I don't know, like, that's like another idea, just so, pick a grade, and every summer, if you're in fifth grade, you get to do the waterman program, which is about learning, you know, marine biology.
I think he, because Bethany was talking about how she was trying to coordinate with the people who gave the.
Yeah, yeah.
Had a very particular idea of how they wanted the money spent, so she was trying to come up with a program that would meet that, and she's like, I've had a ton of ideas, but they haven't quite met their criteria to kind of spend the money.
Right. Yeah.
So I think they were leaning more towards making sure every kid on the island can swim, making sure that, you know, that kind of thing, not so much the science side of it, but just really enjoyment of the water, having that.
Okay, yeah. Because Cindy has. Cindy has programs of shamanic design, this.
For that.
Specific grade levels.
Yeah.
Like mark studies and things like that.
But it's a, it's a limited, um, she, you know, you, they fill up and, you know.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm talking about during the school year.
During school year, yeah.
No, I'm talking about summer. I'm not talking about school year. She has, obviously, other than Shelter Island, she strikes schools from Nassau Suffolk, Western Suffolk, that come out for the day, because I've participated in those.
But I was thinking also, like, what Matt Mobius does, but do it, like, he'd be a perfect kind of candidate.
Do it like September, October, and then do it.
And the first thought that came to my mind, I mean, he's a very great, I was thinking, does she have a grandson?
Maybe fifth grade.
That's what's getting her husband out of the house to pursue these activities more, you know, really, not working on the water, but in the water.
Okay, so we're going up two thousand and fifteen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so seventeen thousand there. Okay. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to end this strategy.
When are we meeting next?
I'm just double checking my totals, just to get a sense of, I'm making sure my spreadsheets.
Let me add up mine. I had stopped adding a while ago, so.
Yeah, mine is just like, I'm like, it's neutral. We didn't have anything, just.
Just tell me where.
Literally coming out. I think Shelby knows where my, my spreadsheets are up to date. Yeah, it's worse, right?
It's not as bad, it's not as good as you think. It's got it worse.
Eleven point eight.
I was going to say, we haven't really done anything that's.
We started like eleven point four?
Eleven point nine?
Eleven point five, I think you should.
Yeah.
Eleven point nine, I thought we started at.
Eleven point nine, yes.
Eleven point nine was the first starting point, and we're at eleven point eight?
We started at eleven point five.
I think you know today.
We went up to.
Exercise.
Yes, today.
Exercise on spinning your wheels. Uh-huh, yeah, so, that's, no, my numbers were that off, okay. And, see, now I'm not bad at math.
Okay, you want to call it a day or?
I was expecting you to say nine point eight or.
Oh, no, you're so optimistic. That wasn't from today, though.
Oh, just from today, I thought. Just not quite that, you know, it was something.
Full, okay.
Yeah.
Hey, when's our next scheduled meeting? Tuesday?
Um. No, we don't actually. So let's schedule some, because obviously we haven't fixed this problem yet.
I would say.
So look at the expenditures, I just wanted to double check that, shall we, I have the same numbers.
So what I did is I filled in, like, the whole town board column.
Yeah.
And then we're, okay.
Yeah, yeah, because I wanted to track where we are, so I have.
You're looking at your cover sheet?
Nope, I'm just, I'm looking at the bottom of the A front, where I have the sub-totals.
Okay.
So, I mean, they're probably the same, I haven't checked that they flow over yet. Yeah, they don't flow yet. So I've got appropriations in the A front of twelve million, two-hundred eighty-eight thousand, three twenty-three point six four.
I'm twelve, two eighty-two. Nine two six.
Okay, we'll have to do a comparison afterwards. But we don't have to torture everybody to ask them.
No.
And then for. Venues. Or receipts, I should say, um, two million, two thirty-two, seven eighty-five point nine.
I have two, two three three, seven eighty-five point nine.
That's a rough a thousand dollars, okay, we'll compare.
That's not going to be that much.
Yeah.
Check it out, it's fast. Here, cool down.
So, yeah. My creations, those are. I have two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
They show what page was capital.
At the back.
I got it, I got it, yeah.
All right, let's return.
Okay.
Start to, off at the top. I'm right here.
Okay, so when, when, I, I, I got to be honest, I would prefer to prioritize this over negotiations. We got to get this done.
Yeah, I, I'd like to try to get as much of this done before Jim leaves, because it'll be easier with him here in person than trying to catch it soon. Right, so.
I'm, I'm, to be honest, I could come Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. I'd be, no, I, I, I'm just Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, no, no, I, I have to get some other work done, tax return stuff, I have a pending deadline, and I paid a little attention this week to that. So Tuesday, nine AM is Taylor's Island, ten AM we would be at schedule PBA.
But we could push them, because it's, it's just the ADP. And twenty-nine thousand. Yeah, anyway, so if you can't do that before.